Kat Thatcher. We're members of the team at Sotheby's International Realty in Falmouth. And Falmouth has been so busy with real estate.
Yes, it has. I've been so busy, I haven't had time to color my hair.
Margaret, that's way too busy.
I know.
Still, it's a great time for buyers because interest rates remain at historic lows.
And it's a great time for sellers because the inventory is so low.
Hmm, so that's increasing demand.
Yes, it is. Don't you love Falmouth?
Just returned from an executive session. If you all can please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First up on tonight's regular agenda is a joint meeting with the Planning Board. This joint meeting is to discuss and approve the Springbars Road scope of services collectively with the Cape Cod Commission. And I'm going to turn it over to Heather Harper to frame tonight's discussion a little bit. I'd like to welcome the Planning Board and thank you for coming. I know it's not your regular meeting night, and we kind of threw it out there as an extra meeting, and I appreciate your input.
Yes, thank you for being available. The two boards asked that we have a final draft scope of work for the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen to review before the end of this year. And this being the last meeting of the Board of Selectmen, we were able to work with the Cape Cod Commission and our staff to do that for you. I want to just acknowledge that Brian Carrington Planner here, DEF Converse CPC Planner, and Sarah Porje, Project Manager and Historic Preservation Planner for the Cape Cod Commission, are all here. We all worked collaboratively to develop the final scope of work. Our first meeting was with six members of the staff of the Cape Cod Commission representing a broad range of expertise, at which we brief them on the history of the project and the parcel and all the challenges related to the potential development, as well as the historical land uses in the area. And I think the result is a fairly comprehensive scope of work, which is divided into five tasks. The first three tasks are related to the proposed project, and really relates to some of the municipal issues surrounding the use of the Springbars Road parcels. Beginning on page two, the work objective, they're free. I'm not going to read them out loud unless you'd like me to, but they're very straightforward. And then the first task being background research, which has already begun. We've transferred volumes of materials to the Commission staff. They've also had the opportunity to review a lot of background on the property as a prior development was before the Commission for its review. So they have a lot of history about the environmental and wastewater issues confronting that particular section. There's a lot of knowledge at the Commission staff level on the property already. Task two, related to the Springbars Road site, is an infrastructure analysis, which are multiple issues, including water and wastewater supply, transportation, and environmental issues. And the third task is related to the project viability and alternatives. And I'm going to address something in the end of my comments. It goes on to discuss deliverables. And then the last two tasks, four and five, really relate to the broader planning area context, which the two boards discussed, and that's the future land use study. And that is a more comprehensive review of a broader planning area, which is defined on the final page of the scope of services. The Commission staff will conduct a broad planning analysis resulting in a conceptual land use plan for the study area, identifying issues and opportunities for development, broadly identify areas where redevelopment or reinvestment can be encouraged to provide services and support for the surrounding residential uses, including the project site, to study potential incentives and regulations to implement the plan, such as zoning, infrastructure, open space, landscape buffering, and street scape improvement. The last two relate to analysis of existing connections, pedestrian, bicycle, vehicular circulation, and how new proposed uses may be impacted through redevelopment and planned traffic pattern changes, considering compatible adjacent land uses linked to existing residential, commercial, industrial zones, taking into a lot of the bigger picture quality of life and long-term planning issues we discussed at your last meeting, as well as a conceptual plan to provide broad density and land use recommendations for the study area for the town's consideration. These will all be presented to the town for its consideration. I wanted to note on task five, what some of the community should expect, the two boards. We'll begin with a project initiation meeting, which has not occurred yet, will only occur with the green light of the two boards this evening. The staff, Commission has agreed to allocate significant staff resources onsite in Falmouth. A day a week in January, of course, not Christmas and New Year's week, but three weeks of a full day of a Commission planner will be available in Falmouth, expecting they will be working on project meetings. But will also be available if there are interested parties who want to meet the Commission staff and know that Commission resources are being made available here in Falmouth. And then a half a day a week through March as the study progresses and nears its end. The Commission has proposed monthly updates by email, which we're welcome, happy to share with anyone who's interested, especially with the boards. A meeting with the CPC at the beginning of the project, a meeting to present the draft report, as well as a final presentation. And we've planned in multiple internal meetings, which are drafted in here, as well as an unassigned meeting to be determined, should we determine that an additional board meeting, group meeting, or some sort of a community process is necessary. The schedule anticipates that by December 15th or 17th, we would have a go-ahead to move forward with the Commission, and the project would be complete by April 15th. Now, we did receive some feedback from the distribution of the draft scope of work, which was distributed on Thursday, and one hand down. I think the planning board received this already. Let us note on page six, there were specific concerns raised about the third bullet under task three. This is under reviewing the current project at the Springbars Road site. Said explore options that might enhance the project's financial viability, including a mix of uses, comma, transfer or development rights, comma, or other incentives. This would include an estimate of the cost of any variation in infrastructure needs associated with those options. So tremendous amount of feedback through the CPC and the Planning Board Chairman that the term of a mix of uses, a mix of land uses may be inconsistent with prior discussion that the towns had, the vote of town meeting related to the use of this property for affordable housing. We initially recommended that that move forward from just a slight approach. I think there's enough community concern about that, that that might escalate community concerns about future uses on that property, given the commitments that have already been made, and that that might distort the view of the project in its entirety. We recommend removing that altogether at this point. And in page six, is the revised page, which deletes those words. I don't think there's a tremendous loss in the scope of services as a result. We've come a tremendous way from where we were even just a few weeks ago. I'm tremendously pleased with the work that the Cape Cod Commission did. I think they did a really great job understanding the needs of the community in a short period of time, and have developed a scope of work that can be executed in a fairly short period of time, and provide the town both, short-term, important information about the project itself, and even more so, important thoughts about how we intend to plan for that district in the long term. So we've got multiple staff here who are happy to answer any questions, as well as myself and Sarah Porje from the CPC.
I'd just like to say that I'm happy to see that we were able to build some consensus between the boards and the committee to be able to come to a final conclusion, specifically with this third bullet point on page six. So do I have any comments in regard from the members of the Planning Board about the modified scope of work? Yes, Ralph?
Hi, Ralph Herbst, Chairman of the Planning Board, Planning Board Representative to the Community Preservation Committee for the last seven years. And I spent considerable amount of time looking this over this morning. And I have some comments. I'm glad that that modification was made. That was one of the questions that I had. But I think I need to go back to the first page, and I'd like for those of you who have copies of this to follow me along, if you would. It appears to me that throughout the scope of work, as far as definitions are concerned, the word property refers to both parcels. The word project refers to the housing portion, which is only on one of the two parcels. In the very first paragraph, the second to the last line, which is, I believe, an extension of what you've said on your page six, you say that together with the analyzing its associated infrastructure needs and exploring conceptual alternatives. I think that's a mistake to have that in there. It's a waste of time and energy to consider alternatives for this piece of property, considering the article that was brought before town meeting and passed, and also the memorandum of understanding that the Community Preservation Committee entered into with the Board of Selectmen. So I would highly recommend that the Cape Cod Commission disregard considering any alternatives for the piece of property that has been purchased by the town. Also in the second paragraph, in about the middle, there's a sentence that says, "The property was once proposed for 168-unit, Chapter 40B development, but it since has been acquired by the town by using community preservation funds." Two things there. One, because community preservation funds were used to purchase the property, the property is locked into using only any of the four categories that the Community Preservation Act allows, which most people understand is historic preservation, community housing, open space, and recreation. That's precisely what the Community Preservation Committee recommended. Three out of those four. There's nothing historic over there that we are interested in preserving. Also, I think you should add there that there was a $500,000 state grant, so you could add that after the words "community preservation funds." On page two, the work objective under one, on the top of the page, there are "study infrastructure needs in the area to support the proposed project." That's housing, that would be for housing and open space only. And then in the next paragraph, there's a mention for the housing project on the property "in light of the community's design and density limitations." I think what the word "community" has to be defined as, are you talking about the immediate community there, or are you talking about the town of Falmouth? So I think there's some ambiguity there. Let's see, under tasks, background research, the first sentence, the first bullet there in the middle sentence, there are two separate Springbars Road committees that are dealing with this project. One deals with the open space area, and one deals with housing. So you need to distinguish between those two. On page three, at the very top, on my copy anyway, under deliverables, it says, "The initiation meeting with town officials." A town's, I'm sorry, initiation meeting with town staff officials. You need to define who town staff officials are, because there's a town staff slash officials. Who are these people? Who is going to get, who is going to be at this meeting? We need to be more specific. On task two, the very first paragraph, under wastewater, wastewater analysis, in the conversation I had with Jerry Potomac this morning, the very last sentence says, "The staff will consider potential costs of alternatives if the property is unable to connect to the comprehensive wastewater management Phase One collection system." I don't believe that's correct. We've already, the Cape Cod, I mean, the Community Preservation Committee has already gone to the state, and the Secretary of Environmental Affairs on March 25th of 2011 approved a notice of project change concerning the existing sewer system in this town. So this is not, it's not necessary for the Cape Cod Commission to look into the fact that we have to wait until Phase One of the collection system is in place. Okay? We can hook up for, we can hook up to it now. The red, I'm sorry, they're red on my copy, which are crossed out, and neighboring properties is crossed out twice in the next, as you go down the page. And I'm just wondering why those were dropped? Maybe somebody could answer that now before I go forward.
There's no red cop on any of our copies.
Okay, all right, let's see.
I just, I'm just going to say this, if we have this many corrections, there is no way we're going to accomplish this this evening. So we probably need to.
Well, that's why I'm here. I'm sorry, but that's why I'm here.
I know you are. I know you are, but I'm just.
You asked for comments, and I'm giving them to you.
I realize that, but quite candidly, this has been circulated in the last week and a half, and I would have hoped that you would have talked to the staff, meaning the town planner, the town manager, assistant town manager, to be able to put your input in, to be able to mold this in the right way. I know that Mr. Clark met with Heather Harper today, and we were able to make an adjustment based on some of his comments. But to be able to rewrite this entire scope of work tonight at this meeting?
I'm not asking you to rewrite the whole scope of work. I'm asking you to consider my comments. And if we received information that Mr. Clark and Ms. Harper did today, formalized today, and we just received that tonight, talk about receiving something late. I mean, that's a change that you're giving to us right now.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, I'd like to continue. Can anybody answer why "and neighboring properties" was dropped on A, B, two, and B?
Can you tell us what page you're on at this time? What page you're on at this time?
I'm on page number three.
Okay.
Okay. So nobody can answer that, so we'll just go on.
I can answer that.
Okay. Heather, go ahead.
Well, I will do my best to answer that. That's a previous draft that was distributed and not recommended, but my recollection is that this section, if you recall, is related to the project and not related to the neighboring properties. The next section, land use number four, task four, relates to neighboring properties, so it didn't belong in this section.
Okay, that's good. On page number four, just a comment on the transportation analysis, you're looking about, in the very first paragraph, talking about congestion and safety issues for motorists, cyclists, pedestrians, and so forth. Recall that there was 168 units proposed for this project originally, and under 40B, and that would have overwhelmed the neighborhood. So the Cape, the Community Preservation Committee came in with an alternative of 30 units maximum, and so we already have taken that into consideration. I don't deny that the Cape Cod Commission might not want to take it up again. I believe there's a typo under A. I believe it's within the study area, segments within the study area, not with the study Let's see here. I don't have much else. How am I doing on time, Kevin?
Oh, you have as much time as you want. I'm just saying that you brought up a lot of different points.
Yeah, I did. Because you're asking us to do that. That's why we're having a joint meeting.
Mm-hmm.
That's exactly what we're doing. On page six, under, you already taken out a mix of uses, which is, I'm very glad that that was done, and I'm glad that Peter Clark and Heather took care of that. At the bottom, it says, "Recommendations for the first steps taken in the solicitation and land disposal process and the current project parameters, and any alternatives that are developed." So there you're talking about alternatives again, or mixes of uses, and you might want Let's see, I believe, down to my last few things here. Page eight, under report, development, and meetings, second bullet, "Provide monthly updates to the town via email and other member..." Need more specificity there, please? Town manager, planning board, Community Preservation Committee, so that we don't get left out. The second to last bullet on the bottom, "Commission will present the draft report to the office of the town manager," and I'm suggesting that you add "and planning board" because we're an integral part of this. That's why we're meeting tonight. Page nine, under reporting and coordination, again, throughout, in the middle of the paragraph, "Throughout the term of the contract, Cape Cod Commission will provide the town with regular updates." Much more specificity there, please. Sarah, she'll do that. Thank you. That's the extent of my study of this morning. I will say that the planning board received electronic copies of this about a week ago, and we have not discussed it amongst ourselves. So I'm talking as a member of the planning board and not as the chairman of the planning board. And I will also say that the last meeting that the Community Preservation had, we didn't have any copies of this at all. I had, and I had a copy, but nobody else on the Community Preservation Committee had. So again, I'm speaking as just one member and not as the chairman of the planning board, and I'm only speaking as a member of the Community Preservation Committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I'm Peter Clark, Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee. Again, as Ralph has said, the committee itself has not taken time to discuss this, so I'm speaking kind of as an individual member and chair of that. But I do want to say that I feel that this captures a lot of the discussion we've had before in terms of a fairly narrow definition relative to parcel B, looking at whether the implementation of it will have costs, what the impacts will be. That all makes good sense to me as a member. I, like Ralph, I'm pleased that we're not talking about changing the basic uses of that property, but we're talking, I assume now, within the context of housing on that property, on the parcel, on parcel A, and conservation on parcel B. The only, I would like to make a quick correction, as Ralph did. There are two subcommittees on page two, to make it consistent with page eight. I think it should say that you'll meet with the CPC rather than any particular subcommittee. I think that does fit, I think, with your initial meeting with the CPC as mentioned later on. So I think the whole committee should be there in page two at task one, first bullet. Other than that, I guess I was interested in the fact that task four on the deliverables has specific dates listed. Task two and task three on page six do not have dates attached to the deliverables, and I just was curious about why that might be. And my final point would be that, as Mr. Herbst, I'm eager to know the ways in which we'll be kept informed as the process goes along. Thank you.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Doug.
Hi, Douglas Brown from Planning Board. So my only other concern was when we're looking at task three, project viability, that when we're exploring options that might enhance the project's financial viability, I hope those wouldn't be options like increasing the number of units, because, you know, the neighborhood has already agreed to this plan. So that's my only concern.
Go ahead, Mr. Latimer.
For record, I'm Richard Latimer. Mr. Herbst, question, initiating meeting with town staff slash officials on page three as deliverable. You were currying which staff and officials that would be. I'm trying to read this thing as a whole. It was open on page eight, says deliverables, task five, project initiating meeting with town officials. And on page nine, it says total number of meetings, project initiation one, town officials one. And I'm getting kind of confused with what all that means. I mean, I would assume that this is the project initiating meeting with town officials and staff, since town officials, no? Well, then, Mr. Herbst raised a very valid question. When will that meeting be? What staff and officials will be present? Let's be specific about that, because then we've got CPC, then we've got another meeting with town officials. Now, who are town officials? They are the selectmen, they are the planning board. Are there any other town officials that are included within this? There are other agencies, but they are not necessarily officials, office holders. So I think a little more clarity is needed in that, as Mr. Herbst suggested.
Heather?
I wouldn't want to squall any more board member discussion, but I'm happy to respond to what I've heard.
Okay. I don't see anyone else's hand up. Go ahead, Pat.
Pat Kerfoot, Planning Board. I too read the alternatives, but I am not as exercised as Ralph is, and perhaps it's my correct or incorrect interpretation, because I interpreted that as alternatives for the whole area, because they are studying that as the whole area, not specifically the Spring Bar's property. And I would look forward to a number of alternatives for redevelopment or development of that whole area.
Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead, Jim. Mr. Fox?
I agree with Pat. At our last joint meeting, when we agreed to have the scope of work, I thought it was discussed we're going to look in a much greater area, possible rezoning, other uses that work with it, and I don't see that much of it there. This is tying into our main street. The map shows a tying into the town, but I didn't see the scope of work really talking about that as much. There's an awful lot of properties inside that map, and we're not talking about it in the scope of work here. And that's what I anticipated we would be seeing when this came out. So I'm somewhat taken back. The focus on this is not as broad as I thought it would be.
It was my understanding that we were going to take one step at a time, do the inner area, which is this development, and then ask the commission afterwards to help us with the expanded area, because there was some sense of urgency.
But we're scoping, we're approving the scope of work tonight, right?
This scope of work, just.
Is there another scope of work we're going to see?
We hope to in the future, yes.
That could lead to my, we're not understanding what's going on, because I didn't see that.
Heather? Okay, do we have any more comments from the planning board? Any more from the Board of Selectmen before? Go ahead, Doug.
Do we want to try to make some changes to this to get the support of the planning board and our support?
Maybe we can have Heather address, maybe there could be some simple explanations for some of them.
Well, I'm going to do my best to respond to what I've heard, and nothing, though, I think, is beyond addressing. First, I think we just heard some discussion about what exploring conceptual alternatives means. It's in the background section of the report. I believe what we're here to discuss are alternatives, and that's what the two boards met and asked to be done in the scope of work. That I'm comfortable means affordable housing on the Spring Bar's Road, it doesn't mean anything else. On task one, page two, I think we could, I recommend that include the Spring Bar's Road Affordable Housing Subcommittee, and let's talk about the project initiation meeting. This is not the project initiation meeting, this is a meeting to vote the scope of work. We would envision a meeting that had the town planner, the CPC planner, the assistant town manager, the CPC Affordable Housing, Spring Bar's Road Subcommittee, as well as representative of the two boards as they are interested in participating. I would avoid any quorum of any of those boards at that meeting. I would recommend that you not have the full CPC there at that meeting. That is really a meeting to set forth the timeframes that Mr. Clark is anticipating. So it's a working meeting, it is not a board-level discussion. From that meeting, there would be a very clear timeframe. I'm anticipating, I'm speaking for Sarah, but I'm expecting that that would be the result of that meeting, when you get all the stakeholders together from there, and then a full CPC meeting would be scheduled from that point forward. I would want to make sure that there was enough work product for any board or committee to convene, to feel that their time was spent usefully and wisely, and I don't think the project initiation meeting is that meeting. So we can confirm that the initiation meeting with town staff and officials on page three would be the three staff I mentioned, may include the town manager as needed, as well as the Spring Bar's Road Affordable Housing Subcommittee, a representative of the Board of Selectmen, and the planning board. That was what we had envisioned, and it's easy to articulate if that's the preference. Just going to walk through my notes. Mr. Herbst, on page four, caught a typographical error, I should say, within the study area. On page eight, the project initiation meeting, we would change that to include the group that we spoke of. And I think that covers the majority of the issues that were raised. And just let me comment quickly on the comment about the scoping of the land use area. That would include a study of the town's overall planning and zoning, including the town's goals related to, sorry, industrial land uses, and the uses in that area, and how that area connects to the marine harbor area, to the transitional commercial area, to the Davis Straits area. So that would take into account. And I may not say that as clearly as it might, but in both the background area, it tells, says there's a study of the full, of the town zoning under background research, gather maps and data concerning environmental land use and infrastructure of the study area, review current town regulations applicable in the study area, and that would be plans related to the townwide plans. And then, in the future land use study, really relates to what our long-range plan is for that area and how it connects to its adjacencies. So that's what I believe and expect will be the result of what this scope is.
Go ahead.
I just want to say that was my clear understanding from the joint meeting that we had with the Cape Cod Commission members present, that this would include the study of the surrounding area alternatives for several blocks around the area to see what feasible types of development could be included in the overall plan. So I would think definitely that's part of it.
Mr. Curry has a further question.
Brian, come to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And to answer Jim's question, if you look on page seven, right above deliverables, the conceptual land use plan, provide broad density and land use recommendations for the study area. Jim, is what we're talking about there. We're not going to get into the nuts and bolts of what those precisely might be at this time. That'll be a later task, hopefully for the commission's expertise.
Okay, Doug?
I guess two points that were brought up that I would like to clarify on page two. I do think Mr. Herbst commented on which community we're talking about for the design and density limitations, to be a little more specific. What would you suggest for that, Heather?
Under work objective two.
Bullet two?
The community's design and density limitations refers back to page one, under background, and what the community has already discussed related to the 70 bedrooms, the rental units, the handicap accessibility. It relates back to page one. So you could say the town of Falmouth.
Okay. Just to clarify that. And I really would refer on page six, if we did take the recommendation that Mr. Brown of getting rid of that last line of the deliverables, and the alternatives that are developed, just to be very clear that we're not asking the commission to come up with new ideas for the Spring Bar's project, that we're going to get advice about this project, but we're not going to try something different.
I think you addressed that, and the change.
Are you talking about the last bullet point, Doug, there?
No, under deliverables.
It's the second one, recommendation?
The recommendations, the very last line.
What page are you on?
Page six.
Page six. The only question that I have with that is, one of the options there is the transfer of some of those development rights. So that could be, that could play into this.
I don't see that as an alternative, an alternative to what's being proposed. That could still be something within our proposal. That wouldn't be any kind of a change from what we're proposing.
Right, but also up a little further, it does say, under task three, "Explore the options that might enhance the project's financial viability, including the transfer of development rights or other incentives." I think that would still be part of this scenario here on the deliverables. You know, we're not looking for alternatives. We all know this is affordable housing, but part of the deliverables are, come back with the proposal, how to transfer some of those development rights. I just want to leave some options open there, that's all I say.
I would agree with Doug, Mr. Jones.
Got to go to the microphone. Where are we, folks, here? So let's figure out what we want to do, whether we want to work this document tonight. Do you think it's within the reach to work this document tonight? Do you think that we need to set some other parameters up? Yes, Pat?
I just think that... I just think that the comments from some of the members of the planning board where they see the, and also from Peter Clark, where they see the value of some more specificity. And I understand that, and I think Sarah and the commission would understand that too. You have to remember, the commission tries to keep things a little more broad and allows the groups to define the specifics as they, you know, as the project goes forward. So everything doesn't have to be exactly specific. But I think as these meetings occur and you work together, that those specifics will become more, become more visible, if you will, and there'll be more discussion around it. But I think the idea is to create as much flexibility in the scope of services, along with providing some specifics, to make sure that there is a certain amount of flexibility, that you don't get constrained partway into the project because it was too specific. So I don't know how you feel about that, but I've seen it work in the other communities. And I know these kinds of outlines have worked fairly well, as long as you understand what they mean and that where you need to be specific, you are specific. And I hope that that, through the work that Heather did with Peter and somebody on the planning board, that that will work out well.
Ralph Herbst, Chair on Planning Board. In the interest of brevity, I don't think tonight is the time to do this. In fact, I think it can be done by staff people. And I'll be happy to give the copy, my copy and my comments to Mr. Curry and/or Mr. Clark and if they can work it out. We have another meeting scheduled right now. When we leave this room, we're going to have our planning board meeting. So that's another reason why I think, in the interest of brevity, it'd be best that we passed, handed this off to staff. And I think they're totally capable of dealing with it.
Well, to be clear, I think if you mean by handing it off to staff and come back in three or four weeks with a scope of services, that's going to put huge problems. If you mean, let's approve the scope of services and let the staff work out the details, then I would be comfortable with that. But if we have to put this off before we approve it for another three or four weeks, that's going to cause a lot of delays in moving this forward.
I think the last thing we want to do is delay this. So I would think that that would be acceptable.
So you would agree with moving forward and vote the scope of services with the specific changes being made by the staff?
I would, but the planning board has to vote. I have to agree to that.
Well, we're going to take a joint vote. We'd take a joint vote on this. So I'll be looking for a motion then, one way or the other.
I move.
Sorry. I know you usually have a microphone. This is only for the TV audience, I can hear you.
I move that we vote to approve the scope in front of us with the staff to work on the changes that have been discussed tonight.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor? Planning Board first? Well, I'll have you call your own vote, right? Okay. Board of Selectmen, all those in favor? The eyes carry it. Thank you very much. Stephen Parker, 378 Acapescot Road, East Falmouth, Mass.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Reider with DSS Design, representing the applicant of Stephen Parker. He owns land at 378 Acapescot Road on Green Pond. Does everybody have a drawing?
We have a small one, nothing that we could sign, so just a for you.
Body water, again, it's Green Pond. It's an existing house, dates back to 1965. Years ago, there was some little seasonal dock, never licensed, goes back maybe to the 70s or so. There was even no sign of it, but I just heard word in this little niche in Salt Marsh that there was once some structure there. So that's the location where we chose to, you know, put this proposed dock. It does fit in between these two existing docks. These are both licensed. This one is close to the lot line extension, but we're sort of centered in there. I drew a line from dock to dock. This one is right at that. Distance out, three and a half feet of water. At the end, the requirement's three feet under conservation rules and two and a half feet under the Army Corps of Engineers rules, so we fully meet that. The reason we're out of ways there is there's a few shellfish here, not many. And this outer area known as Area A under the conservation rules, there's no shellfish in this area here. So that's why we're out. Overall, it's 110 feet, but it's 85 feet from the inward edge of the marsh up there. This is a four-foot wide dock with place for one boat at the end. We have a profile down here. There's a stairway of getting off the dock down to the beach, stairway down over the bank, slopes down, again, lateral axis of five feet at the high watermark that's required for dock design, at least four feet over salt marshes, and we have grading over that marsh area. So that slopes down to elevation four and a half, where we have a ramp and float held by a couple of piles. So again, this has an order of conditions. I did bring an extra copy if you've got one.
We do have an order of conditions. And we do have a report from the harbor master that there is no navigational issues with this.
Right, right. Yeah, I was going to say that. Favorable letter from Rain Fisheries. The shellfish warden looked at it, gave it its nod, and again, you don't really get an order of conditions until you have all that, you know, in the lineup anyway, so. Again, here's a little cross-section of the dock, it shows specifics. It's held by this detail here, this hoop roller pile holder, which is a conservation commission standard now when you do have a float. That's about it. And, you know, it's standard ramp here. So it meets all the performance standards of the, you know, state, federal, and local regs.
Any comments from the board?
No questions.
Go ahead, Pat.
Jeff, was there ever a dock there before, or is this?
Well, this is, like I said, there was a seasonal dock of sorts. This house was owned by a family for a long time, so they just told me that. One of the kids mentioned that the folks moved out and sold it to Steve Parker. I saw no sign of a dock here, except for there was somewhat of a cut in the salt marsh. If you see how it's drawn on my plan, it's narrow there, showing that there was the kind of activity, probably where they just launched boats, but I saw no sign of any wooden anything there anymore. So we're starting from scratch.
Okay. Thank you.
Hopefully started locally, then into the state and federal permits.
Any feel? Any public comment? So is anyone interested in making a motion with the planned date of July 31, 2012?
Move approval of a plan dated July 31, 2000, September 18, 2012.
Great, thanks, Brett.
For property located on Green Pond. Acapescot Road with a dock on Green Pond.
378.
378.
So there's a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The eyes have it. Next up is the discussion of the wind turbines' daytime sound sampling results. I believe we have some folks with us this evening from the DEP, Laura Carlson and Phil Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Phil Weinberg and I am the new Regional Director of the Stock East Regional Office in Lakeville. I've been there since September. Prior to that, I was Assistant Commissioner for Operations out of the Boston office. My thumbnail CV, I did have a lot of opportunity to work on permitting and compliance issues for energy projects, both renewable and more traditional projects, and been following the situation in your community. I know there are a lot of environmental issues that Falmouth faces, and I just really wanted to introduce myself, leave most of the talking to Laurel, but just to put a face with the name. Looking forward to really having a problem-solving and productive relationship, you know, with members of the board. So with that, I think it probably makes sense to turn it over to the expert.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. Very good to see you all again.
Thank you.
It's been a little over a year since we last met. My name, for those here, is Laurel Carlson. I'm with Mass DEP. And I was asked to come here tonight to talk about the report we issued to you on November 29th that details the daytime sampling of the sound from the wind turbines. So let's take a step back a little bit to explain exactly why DEP got involved in this to begin with. And I know Mary Pat and I had some conversations way back in the day. The town had gone ahead after receiving a number of complaints, had asked HMMH to conduct some additional sound sampling after the turbines were, after Wind One was up and operational. And HMMH sent that report to us for our review. At the time we reviewed it, we suggested, well, maybe you need to do some attended sampling. Because HMMH had set up a monitor in several locations and then not stood there and made sure that the sound that they were recording was actually the turbine or the traffic or the dogs next door or the bugs. At that, when we asked for attended sampling, the town asked us if we could assist because financially that was going to place a burden on you to pay for an additional study. So we went out and we did what was called, the first study we did, which is called the worst-case study, is a nighttime study. In the dead of the night, what do we hear? And that was done on Wind One. And you may recall that was done in the middle of winter or early spring, March, and you received that report in May. Once you, before you received that report, however, you decided to curtail the operations to seven to seven. And so the question came up when we found exceedances in the first, in the worst case, in the middle of the night, what's going on in the middle of the day? So this study that we just issued is the study of what the sound is in the middle of the day. We chose time of day that was off what we call off-peak. It wasn't when people were commuting, per se. We waited till after the morning rush and before the evening rush. So we got the quieter part of the middle of the day. And then we conducted the sampling, and because Wind Two was now operating, we were able to, we needed to sample further north and west, basically up along Route 28A, because Wind Two is a little closer to that side, whereas most of our sampling was on Blacksmith Shop Road previously. So we conducted the sampling along Blacksmith Shop Road at three locations. We sampled at three locations along the northwest side of the property, of 28 Ridgeview, the cul-de-sac at Amble Side Drive, and then 821 West Falmouth Highway, which is the closest home to Wind Two. Not surprising that while we found exceedances of our 10 dB sound standard in the middle of the night when it's very quiet, and we found that down at 211 Blacksmith Shop Road, under almost every condition, under all the conditions we sampled, actually, we did not find a similar problem in the daytime. And you'd expect that because the activity in the community and along the highway in the daytime is going to raise the background sound levels up so that the sound of the turbine gets washed in with the sound of traffic. So what we have found in our daytime results is we couldn't, we did not identify any exceedances at the time that we sampled, and that was during a quieter time of day, we hope. Well, we're pretty sure it was. And it was off, we got it before the tourist season hit, so we know it wasn't a summer affected too much by summer traffic either. We did most of that sampling in June. So that leaves us with what the finding, the only problems we've found so far, which is during the quiet time of the night, we do have issues with the sound from Wind One on Blacksmith Shop Road and specifically at 211 Blacksmith Shop Road, which is where we found the exceedance. And we found that exceedance under different wind, multiple of wind conditions and a multiple of wind directions. So we're fairly confident that anytime those conditions persist, a southwest wind, a northwest wind, a strong wind, or a light wind, that you will always find an exceedance of our 10 dB standard at that location. That's sort of the presumption we go with, since we found that in every time we sampled. So I don't know how much detail you folks want from me or how much I can output. More than willing to answer any questions you have, and...
The only question I have is that in the community, there are some other ways that folks are interpreting the sound studies that were taken. Maybe you could address that a little bit.
I'm not sure I know how it's being interpreted. I try to be very clear when I write these reports.
Great.
This is what the study covers. There's a list of limitations in the report that say this is what this study does not cover. I hope that people pay attention to those because the study did not make any inference to whether infrasound is there or not. We, in fact, do not have a state standard for infrasound, so we do not sample for it, nor do we have a standard to apply to it. We did not study amplitude modulation. We do not have a state standard for amplitude modulation. Therefore, we do not make any judgment on that. That said, I will let you know, because you were involved early in our discussions about wind turbine sound in general. Mass DEP, as you may recall, along with the Department of Public Health last year, asked for a literature review done by some third-party, some professors and whatnot, to look at issues of things like amplitude modulation, infrasound. And the third-party review panel came back and said, well, based on the current literature, here's what most scientists are saying. Now, we took that out to public hearing and we got a lot of comment. And we've been evaluating over 500 comments and writing a response to comments to respond to each, to those 500. And we are taking up the issue now of evaluating what kind of standards should we adopt for infrasound and amplitude modulation. We've got nothing proposed yet. We've got nothing going out to hearing. We are simply in the first stages of evaluating our options. And come this fall, we probably, not, sorry, next spring, we'll probably be establishing some, another round of public input on some potential standards. But these reports do not reflect any of that. These reports reflect me standing out there, middle of the day or the middle of the night with a monitor and writing down numbers. And I would hesitate to interpret anything more than that.
Well, I know that this was very unusual because very, very rare does a community ask the DEP to come in to do something with the exception of an enforcement issue.
Yes.
And we appreciate your input and your action in this matter.
We're much more likely to loan you our sound meters than to send an old lady like me out to the neighborhood at 2:00 in the morning.
All right. I'm going to just see if we have any comments from the board, any questions anyone might have. Okay? And any public comment?
I have one.
All right, Pat.
Do the results of the study point you in any direction as to what you might want to consider or what, any further studies you might want to do, maybe not here, but elsewhere? elsewhere?
I don't think we intended it to point us in any direction. We did this to give you information. That was the whole purpose, was to give you some attended sound information on this I will say, actually, because it was the first time that we've done a wind turbine, it has informed us as to how to do it—I won't say better, but I'll say—I've made some modifications. Anybody who sat and laid out the Fairhaven Protocol next to the Falmouth Protocol will notice I've been a little more specific. I know a little bit more what I'm doing in terms of the procedures to be applied. I've refined the procedures. They're the exact same procedures. They're just refined and spelled out a little bit more definitively in the Fairhaven than the Falmouth. But it's exactly the same approach in both regards. I just was able to write better, I think, from learning from Falmouth.
Okay. Doug?
And do you have fairly substantial confidence that the lack of exceedances during the day in the sites that you've measured can be transferred to other parts of that area? That you—you know, that we weren't—
You're right. We didn't sample every single house.
Right.
Truthfully, there were times I couldn't hear the turbine at all, walking from property to property. A lot of times, what we would do is I'd walk—as I walked along or went into various properties, I'd stop and listen and say, well, is that sound? Or I'd turn the monitor on and say, was that a little bit higher or a little bit lower? And I didn't see any difference. But all I can state of factually is that these results represent the properties I sampled. There were three properties on Blacksmith Shop Road. The closest property to the turbine was one of them. And as anybody who works with sound knows, the greater the distance, the lesser the sound, as a rule. So I think if I—the closest property is not exhibiting exceedance, I would really wonder if properties further would exceed.
Now, for the nighttime study, we do have the one property that's been identified.
Yes.
I'd be very careful about the town saying, oh, it is one and only one.
I would be, too. It was the one property we found, but in fact, there might—we have not sampled every property on that stretch of road. We sampled, again, three properties. Four, if you count the corner of Service Road and Blacksmith Shop Road. And where we only found the exceedance at one of the four sites, I'm not confident in saying the house to the right or the left, I wouldn't find something similar.
But further away than the one—the houses that did not have exceedance, you would feel more confident saying, further away?
Distance is a factor here. Distance to sound is a factor. Distance, when it comes to sound, is a factor. Terrain is also a factor. So if we had an odd terrain situation, I'd probably say, no, you need to monitor that again, or you need to monitor that to be sure.
Absolutely.
I'd feel particularly if there was a house that was elevated in particular.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I might just add further clarification, if I could ask—I just wanted to confirm with Laurel with your assistance. The one exceedance that you did determine related to Wind One was within what timeframe? I just want to make sure that people understand it is in the wee hours of the—
Well, it was—
Essentially.
Anywhere from 11—it was about 11:30 PM till—at that particular property, most of the sampling was done between 11:30 in the morning and 2:00. And we tried—basically because we were out there a few times prior to sampling to hammer down what is the quiet time? When does—the traffic really drop off to nothing on a weeknight on Route 28? When does it get really quiet? So it was between, say—I think it was around 11:30, 11:15 to 2:00 in the morning is when we did that property. But the whole sampling run started around 11, 11, 11—about 11:00 and went till 4:00 every time we were out there.
That allows us to confirm that that's, of course, well outside the hours within which this board has been determining that the turbines would operate since—and I appreciate Laurel confirming also that this board voted to curtail the operation prior to the town ever being notified that they did find that one exceedance at the one location on Blacksmith Shop Road. And if I might, Mr. Chairman, I just take a moment to thank Laurel Carlson for all her exemplary work. She spent many hours, early and late, here in Falmouth with the testing at the request of the town. And we appreciate all that dedication and service to our community. I want to thank Regional Director Weinberg for joining us as well. We look forward to continuing to work with you. And we also appreciate so much the importance of factual information in terms of the issues that this—the Board of Selectmen is dealing with. The facts are so very important and you've been able to provide that within the realm of your testing to the advantage of the board. So I did want to thank you for that personally as well.
I appreciate it. I can take very little credit. I mean, the department is here to assist you as needed and as we can afford and as we have the ability to assist you. I think it's very important that we accomplish what we intended to achieve here. We really believed that only with attended information, only with an attended sound study, can you really get to the heart of what the sound levels are down in that area. So I'm glad we were able to provide that for you.
Okay. I'm going to take some public comment. If you could just stand by in case we have some questions. First up? Okay.
Kathryn Elder, Precinct 6. I'd also like to thank Laurel and the Regional Director because the fact is, you haven't had to test this—
Direct it through the board.
Sorry.
We don't need to engage the—
It is a big problem. There were a lot of complaints and it's a huge problem in our neighborhood and we really appreciate that the state has come down to take a look at this. And I hope you'll bear with me, I just have a few comments, take a few minutes. Laurel earlier mentioned the literature review that was done by a board of experts, health panel. And one of the findings—or recommendations, I should say, in that—that I wanted to point out, because she reminded me of that, was that amplitude modulation was not looked at, and hopefully, it's something that they will get into in the future. One point about that is that some of the measurements from Wind One showed amplitude modulation levels that Todd Drummy showed all-up to 10 decibels. So that means that the impulse of the sound from Wind One alone was on the order of 10 decibels when we were at the maximum power capacity of the turbine. I would like to point out also that part of that health panel recommendation was that nighttime decibel levels in rural communities was recommended should not exceed 37 to 39 DBA. And we regularly have exceedances of that recommendation in our community. Now, to talk about the daytime testing that occurred last summer, I want to point out, and this is very important, that no exceedances above 10 dB were found during the day. However, the daytime testing protocol included measurements when the turbines were at maximum power or capacity. But if you look at page eight on the report, the DEP tells us that average wind speeds were close to, but not consistently above the levels necessary to generate maximum sound from the turbines. And the turbines produce the maximum sound when they're at maximum power. So we haven't had a test during the daytime where the turbines were anywhere near maximum capacity. In fact, wind speeds at the hub never got higher than 10 meters per second for three of the four test days and reached a maximum speed of 12.9 at one site on the fourth test date. The noise was only 2.4 decibels less than the 10 decibel limit. It was 7.6 above background. Power plants in Massachusetts are limited to 5 to 8 DBA increase in noise above ambient. All of the daytime measurements made west of Route 28 were greater than 50 decibels during the day. If anything, the noise at night will be even higher due to atmospheric conditions. The DEP measurements of nighttime ambient were generally in the 30s at that site and the highest was 39 at night. It's logical to anticipate that there will be exceedances at night for Wind One and Two and for Wind Two alone west of Route 28. Wind One and Wind Two have never been tested running together at night in our community. Only Wind One was tested at night. We have no data for the hours between 4:00 and 9:00 AM, nor do we have data between the hours of 4:30 and 11:00 PM. So I understand and appreciate that the worst-case was tested for Wind One, but it has not been tested for Wind One and Two together at night. I also want to make note from some email correspondence from Tony Rogers, who's with DNV Kima and has been a consultant for the WTOP Committee. And he was asked some questions about how we could possibly use a model to predict what both the contribution of Wind One and Two would mean for nighttime noise exceedances. And I'm not going to go through that whole thing, but I wanted to point out that he said that the DEP measurements are also subject to random sampling errors. As pointed out by DEP, he talks about 27 Ridgeview Road where the nighttime of Wind One measurements averaged 8.4 above background. But actually, what he didn't say, and what I want to say right now, is that there were actually five runs taken there when their protocol basically was for three. And this is basically a Berry Fun Farce house. And the nighttime measurement of Wind One over there showed 8-point-something that I just mentioned before. But the three runs had so much interference, meaning that out of the 60 data points that were taken, 37 were rejected because it was highway or something that they—while you're attending, you reject. The next five-minute run, 32 out of those 60, I believe it was, was rejected. And then 29. And so because there was so much interference, Laurel Carlson, in her good judgment, decided to take two more runs. And those were the cleanest, where she only rejected 19 and nine respectively out of 60. And yet, those two had the highest above-background increases, 10.4 and 11.5. But because she averaged all five of those, she came up with 8.4 for Wind One alone at Berry Fun Farce home. My point is that Wind Two is much closer than Wind One to Berry Fun Farce home. And clearly, anyone with common sense can understand that Wind Two was going to add at least one or two decibels and very likely will result in an exceedance at night at that side of the highway. More measurements are needed if we are going to increase the hours of operation. Measurement uncertainties could include or exclude some properties on a random basis. Tony also gave us this piece of advice. He said that he guesses that the number of homes to be considered for mitigation is somewhere between 20 and 40.
Let's focus on this report. We're bearing off the report now. Now you're talking about things that have come back from a recommendation from the committee. So let's just stay on the report at this time. This board's going to take up what the committee's recommendations are at some point.
Thank you. I appreciate that you allowed me to have these comments.
You can continue to comment. I just want you to stay focused on the report.
I think I've said enough.
Okay. Yes?
Day mount, 221 Blacksmith Shop Road. I'd also like to thank Ms. Carlson. I met her in the neighbor's yard when she was out doing some of this testing. And I thanked her and I thank the board for calling upon her to ask her to come down and help us work through this problem. I sent this message today to the Board of Selectmen that my wife and I respectfully want to submit these comments. We believe that the daytime tests were conducted in May and June, the time of year when the winds are the lightest, that they are two months of the largest Falmouth population and therefore the heaviest vehicle traffic, so the ambient's going to be higher during—than in winter months. Even so, an increase of 76.6 dB over ambient is quite considerable. No testing has ever been done at our home on Blacksmith Shop Road. We live next to the home that was tested at night that exceeded standards and we are convinced that there are times during the daytime when the noise exceeds DEP standards. I just echo the fact that no testing was done at maximum power and I appreciate all of the acknowledgements in this report that have—that were very frank and helpful. It's our judgment that not enough daytime testing has been done on which—for the board to develop any daytime operations policy. And with regard to new standards, in a letter from the Mass DEP to this board in June 2011, Mass DEP said it was in the process, quote, "In the process of updating its guidance for conducting sound surveys to specifically address sound emission from wind turbines." The current Mass DEP's noise sampling guidance was developed to be generally applicable to industrial noise sources that typically exhibit fairly steady emission signatures with relatively little frequency and octave variation. So I would simply suggest that for the board to base decisions on standards that are admittedly from DEP in writing to you that are not adequate would be a mistake. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Yeah. Robulara down Blacksmith Shop Road. Just one quick comment, well, for Laurel Carlson and to you guys through her, I guess. I think, as you probably have heard, there's been a number of suggestions that the sound sampling that was done by the state was done incorrectly. And there's a number of people who would like to see it thrown out. And I would believe that you should question this. I think we might as well bring this up and kind of get it out of the way because it's just going to come up. And you might—we might perhaps ask her to comment on why it's not bad. I think it's fine, but—
I'm not following—you're saying that the sampling should be thrown out or should not?
There are people who say the sampling should be thrown out.
Okay.
And I—you aware of this, right?
I've been told that—
You've got to come to the microphone.
Sorry. And I'm—that's—you know what I'm talking about.
I'm Laurel Carlson. We've met with several different parties now who believe that the sampling that we've done should be thrown out as being ultra-conservative and, in fact, that there were no exceedances. We've had four parties now come to meet with our commissioner and ourselves asserting that and wishing that we would change the approach that we take to doing the sampling and have advocated that we completely revamp our approach. Now, we've taken those all parties' comments under advisement. We're not ready to revamp our approach, particularly in hindsight. And we're not ready to throw out these reports. We believe we have followed the letter of our protocol and when we haven't, where we've had issues, we've disclosed them. And I'd like to speak to the fact that we know that one day we didn't—that we did not get up to the 11 meters per second wind speed that would create maximum sound power levels during the daytime sampling. But the—remember, sound is logarithmic. In order to go from 7 decibels to 9 decibels, you'd almost have to add another 60 to 70% to the sound, not just the little bit extra needed by a 1 meter per second wind speed change. So we felt there was sufficient margin of safety that we wouldn't have gone over 10, even if we were at 11 meters per second. And that's spelled out in the report. We tried to be very clear what our limitations were. It is a quiet time of year. It's a tough time of year to sample between the biological sounds of bugs and trees and things like that. But that was trying to be responsive time-wise to you and the community. I didn't want to turn around and say in May, sorry, but we won't get out there till November next year. So I do—Kathryn brought up—the several people have brought up the wind speed issue. That is acknowledged limitation in the report. And like I said, the only other thing we've really been approached with are the people who want us to throw out the reports because they believe we've been too conservative.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Well, we appreciate you coming this evening and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You missed it, Todd. I'd like to say, by the way, he kept me from walking into wetlands, trees.
He'll push you next time.
He'll push me next time. I don't know. But I have to thank Todd because Todd really did—I've been working in some other communities and Todd really made my life in Falmouth a lot easier in getting onto sites. I thank the residents whose homes and yards I was able to stand in and appreciate the hospitality.
Thank you very much, Laurel. Next up is a report on solid waste, vote to authorize the continued negotiations and contract completion. I'm going to turn this over to the town manager and let him highlight where we are with a solid waste contract to the board and to the public out there. I know that both he and the rest of the professional staff have been working very diligently over the last nine months to be able to secure Falmouth's future as we move forward. And turn it over to the town manager to give a little— And turn it over to the town manager to give a little recap of where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board is aware, you've been authorized and empowered by Town Meeting to enter into a solid waste contract, an action taken prior to my arrival as a town manager, and happy to provide this update to the board. And again, it's a general update because we are involved in discussions, but we do not have any type of final contract at this point. The outline of where we stand currently, I want to present to the board. At this point, the discussion's focused as follows, that this would be a potential contract with the town of Bourne to begin on January 1st, 2015. This would be consistent with the conclusion of our existing agreement with CMAS. It would be at the rate of $58 per ton with annual increases tied to the cost of living index, but not to exceed 2.5 percent annually. There is an understanding at this point that if any lower tonnage rate would be granted to any other municipality, that lower rate would be extended to Falmouth as well. It represents a potential 10-year contract with an option for an additional five years. It commits up to 12,000 tons per year in capacity, representing the maximum needs of the town. Eliminates the minimum annual tonnage requirement, meaning that there would be no penalty for enhanced recycling, an important, a very important issue to us, of course. It would include all residential and town-generated municipal solid waste. And our discussions also affirm a willingness for a separate written agreement with the town of Bourne to continue a working partnership with the existing transfer station operation that we are now involved in. I am seeking the Board of Selectmen's authorization, if you so determine, to continue discussions and negotiations with the town of Bourne. And if agreed, a proposed final contract agreement would be presented to the board early in the coming year for your consideration and action as you would deem appropriate. And I do want to thank my colleague, Public Works Director Ray Jack, for his assistance through this process. Town Council Frank Duffy has been involved as well. And as chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Kevin Murphy, obviously, we've been in a working relationship with Kevin on this matter on behalf of the board. So I'm happy to provide this sort of status report and happy to answer questions that the board may have to the best of my ability and seek your further direction. Thank you.
Before I entertain any comments, I'd like to say that I'd like to thank Warren Selectman Don Picard because he was instrumental in reaching out to the Board of Selectmen through me in Falmouth and engaging our town manager to move through this process. Warren is a neighbor who would like to continue a working relationship with us. And all the premises that I can say that are outlined in what the potential contract could be are surely not the beginning of this negotiation. They've been long and tedious, and they have included other opportunities that are out there to dispose of our waste. To me, this is a win situation for the town because basically we'll be paying $37 a ton in two years when we leave the Covanta contract. We have an additional roughly $20 a ton for the operation and the transfer, the transportation of the waste. So that dollar for dollar would be roughly $57 a ton. Moving to this contract, we would eliminate the costs of the transfer station, meaning the transfer via the rail, and we would have virtually a wash, a $58 versus $58 disposal cost. To me, looking forward, this eliminates the doom and gloom that we all thought was coming down the line, about a $90 per ton disposal cost. It gives the town some breathing room as we move forward and get on board. Our Assistant Director of the Department of Public Works, who will be tasked with the solid waste issue moving forward, we can look at open-mindedly with continuing to foster our recycling program and any potential opportunities for pay-as-you-throw as we get down the line. But this provides an opportunity for the town to take a step back and look at the entire package as we move forward. This is one of the pieces of the puzzle as we move forward in our solid waste over at least the next 10 years, potentially the next 15. So I'd open it up to any questions the board might have, and I'm sure that Julian would be happy to answer and respond to them. Pat?
Last one. The last bullet, I'm not sure I really understand. Affirming a willingness for a separate written agreement to continue a working partnership with the existing transfer station. What might that partnership include with the existing transfer station, I'm assuming at the base?
Yes, absolutely, Selectwoman. Again, we haven't firmed up all the details, but it was a joint recognition by both Town of Falmouth and Town of Bourne that the existing operation is an important one to maintain in an appropriate way. The likelihood is, if this would come together, that it would revolve around recycling issues as opposed to its current function for all solid waste and that it would maintain the location and capability of that facility going forward, including the rail transshipment point, which is important to maintain and keep in play for a variety of operations. But this has not been fully articulated, other than to recognize the importance of maintaining that operation and its role generally in solid waste.
So would we continue to still have to pay to have a contract with this transfer station over and above a contract with Bourne, do you think?
Only at a greatly reduced level, and I would invite Ray Jack to make some comments there if he would care to. Again, this hasn't been fully articulated, but it would not be functioning in its current capacity. In other words, if this would go forward, our packer trucks would gather solid waste here from our neighborhoods and deliver them directly to Bourne. So there is no need to be dumping solid waste at that existing facility, which would free it up for other, perhaps more specialized utilization, such as recyclables, for instance, and working with multiple communities in that regard. And again, my comment is that Bourne has recognized the importance of that as well and has agreed to continue working in that partnership. And there may be others that we would welcome joining us in that regard. But it would be at a considerably lesser cost as we anticipated at this point because solid waste would not need to be taken there directly.
I just have two more questions. Does it... Would this contract also include picking up the recyclables and taking them to Bourne as well, as we have now every other week recyclables are picked up?
They would not... Yeah, they would not be taken to Bourne. It would only be solid waste.
They would not. Only solid waste. So they'd have to go somewhere else.
Well, correct, as they do now. They go elsewhere now, recyclables. So that would not change. And I don't know, Ray, if you have perhaps any comments on the recycling end that might be helpful. So this is solid waste, non-recycling alone at this point.
No, Mr. Souza has explained it very articulately. It really is dealing with just the trash issue for the present time, but we are talking about basically a side letter of agreement whereby Bourne has expressed interest in the past publicly at the transfer station meetings with respect to some type of management opportunities and cooperative opportunities beyond trash at the regional transfer station. So Falmouth recognizes that we do have an investment up there on a regional basis, that once the trash issues are aside, the next logical issue becomes the recycling issue, and that we wanted to be able to keep those avenues open. So that's what this is intended to do, at least afford them that opportunity and us to have that kind of discussion.
Well, just one more. I've always been the kind of thinker that when people say, "Well, suppose the whole system breaks down, what are we going to do?" And my response is always, you do what you would do, the system, you would use the system the way you do the other 364 days when it is working, and you never worry about the one day when it isn't going to work. But nevertheless, I have to ask the question, if for some reason DEP would find something in the Bourne system that would cause them to take some action that may make it not advisable to be able to take any trash there for a period of time, would there be anything in the contract that might address that? Or is that really one of those, no, we just do what we do the other 364 days of the year?
Municipalities are somewhat different than the private sector in regard to how much latitude they're afforded in handling with situations like that. So take something like CMAS, being a private entity. They can, at will, at the drop of a dime, award contracts elsewhere, recirculate trash elsewhere, so they have the ability to divert. A good example would have been in recent years, they had an explosion over at CMAS due to a propane tank. It put them out of business for approximately 30 days, as I recall. They were able to immediately be able to divert directly to Bourne. So therefore, we were not impacted in any way, shape, or form. Everything got collected as per norm. However, Bourne doesn't have that capacity to be able to do something like that by virtue of being a municipality. So the agreement has a stipulation built in that gives us 30 days in the event that something happens, and especially with regard to their failure to operate on that facility. But if the facility were to close, that's pretty much where we are. We would have 30 days to try to find out what we were going to do about it. So there's no question that it involves a level of risk, but then again, one could say the same level of risk does apply to any facility, and CMAS is no different. They're under DEP regulatory requirements as well.
Thank you. That's...
You'd answer other questions?
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Any public comments? Yes, Ms. Elliott.
Excuse me, take me ten minutes to get there.
Not a problem. We have plenty of time.
One question. Did I hear you say 12,000 tons to Bourne?
I believe that that was the maximum amount to the town of Bourne. There is no minimum in this contract.
Okay, there's no penalty if we don't reach that 12,000 tons?
No, that's the maximum amount of waste that they have declared as airspace for us a year, and there is no minimum. So we did 4,000 tons, there would be no penalty.
Yeah, well, Bourne has a limit of 24,000 ton, I believe. 6,000 for themselves and 24,000 they can sell. Well, you're talking 12,000. And they reach that, that's all, I guess, that they can take in there.
That's correct. And we're negotiating as a contract to buy that airspace for the year. They would reserve that airspace for the town of Falmouth.
But what if our contract, not our contract, but what if we have 15,000 ton for the year?
Well, I'm going to let the professional staff answer that. But I'm going to let the professional staff answer that, but I don't believe we're anywhere near that kind of capacity at this time.
I think...
Ray, are you still here? Are we 23,000 ton now, Falmouth?
I'm sorry, 23,000 tons?
Yeah. 23,000 ton going to CMAS now, this year.
Not on residential, and this one only deals with the residential?
Oh, not commercial?
No, no. This is strictly residential and town trash.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, sir.
I have one more question. Will the homeowner, the citizen, see any difference in terms of their trash pickup? With the trash going to Bourne as with the trash going to CMAS?
Mr. Jack, you want to answer that?
No, there should not be any difference, however. Come 2015, we would have to entertain discussions with our hauler at that time because it does represent a change. Granted, it's not a large change going down the road a little bit, but I'm sure that they're going to want to be compensated for that. So it should be a negligible amount, but given the fact that you're going further up on MacArthur Boulevard than we do at our local transfer station, we'll have to negotiate that with our hauler directly. But it will not otherwise impact any of the residential collections.
Just a quick question. Ray, on a given day, how many trucks go into, with our trash, go up to... I mean, how many trucks do you look at going up 28th South on a given day then if this goes through from Falmouth? I mean, is it like a dozen?
It's less than that. Definitely less than that. But it all depends on the seasonal aspect of a winter versus summer and day of the week.
I know, I just, you know, my background, the thinking of the overburden of traffic going around the Otis Rotary year round, but that's all it was. Who's talking? Ray?
Following up, Pat had sort of alluded to the idea of maintaining the transfer station, but I don't know that I heard an actual number put on that. And right now, when the transfer station is maintained and operated by the funds that are really passed through there, every ton is a per-ton cost, and that is used to offset the operation of the transfer station. If we're not pushing trash through the transfer station, how are we going to maintain it? Is it going to be mothballed? Is it going to be... Is there going to be something coming out of our pockets in order to maintain it at a minimal operation? How are we going to manage that?
We would not at that point need the transfer station specifically for trash because we would be able to go directly to Bourne. So at the present time, with not a plan in hand as to what any of that enhanced use would be or alternative use would be, theoretically, then it could be mothballed. But the goal here would be not to waste the capital investment and the opportunity for it because it is centrally located. It is conducive to truck traffic. It is conducive to not only solid waste, but rail transport of whatever opportunities are available. There's also additional opportunities for rail up there from the commercial aspect of it for bringing materials into Falmouth or into this geographic area. Couple of quick examples would be something like salt. Right now, we have to truck in all of our salt when we bring in salt. Theoretically, salt could enter the Cape by rail if it had a place to be able to transload it. Another one would be something like lumber, okay, for commercial purposes, and those are opportunities as well. But I know that the board of managers at the transfer station now for the last couple of years have agonized very hard and very long over what the possible opportunities are going to be. But it's ultimately up to not just Falmouth, but the towns as a whole as to what the future of that facility will actually become. But there have been offers by Bourne and others for expanded uses of the facility that may ultimately be beneficial to the towns with respect to finance.
We mothball it. What are the other towns? What's Mashpee doing or Sandwich? I mean, we know obviously that Bourne is not using it at this point.
Right now, all towns, all of the Upper Cape towns, are committed to January of 2015, to CMAS. So even if this agreement was consummated right now, we're still obligated to do that. So the transfer station for the present time would still be hauling that trash to CMAS until 2015. That can change as far as the transfer station goes. And I don't want to overly complicate it, but they're bound by CMAS, individual CMAS contracts. We have one, Bourne has one, or we have one and Sandwich has one, Mashpee has one. But then there's the intermunicipal agreement that binds us on the transfer station itself. That can be disbanded at will. So it only takes a vote of the participating towns in order for that to occur. And it's not that complicated because there are no capital costs to a portion out as a result of that. So the presumption for the present time is that for the next two years, it may continue to operate because everybody still does have to get it to CMAS.
But I guess I'm still a little confused. Do we know what Mashpee and Sandwich are doing? We're talking about the potential of mothballing it, but if Mashpee and Sandwich continue to require it after, say, 2015, then are we still obligated to pay into it to help maintain it and operate it even if we're not using it?
No. But it would require, if they were going to continue to do that, that would require that we give them a one-year advance notice of our intent to not participate.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
And I believe that both Mashpee and Sandwich are in discussions with both the town of Bourne and Covanta as we speak about handling waste in the future. So how they transport it then will be up to them. I believe the town of Sandwich is currently transporting their waste via truck, even though they have the ability to go via the transfer station. Am I correct or incorrect in that?
No, they load from their facility by truck and transport it to the regional facility, the Upper Cape Transfer Station, and dump it there, and then it goes by rail.
Okay, good. Now, did you have a little question? Ms. Elliott?
Yeah, I have one more.
Okay.
Something I'd like to mention about Bourne. Ray said it is a little bit longer at Hall. Ray said it is a little bit longer at haul, it could cost us a little more to go there. That's very true. But some of the haulers, right now, don't like to go to Bourne because of a tire problem. They have to go up and dump on the stuff that has been dumped that day. They're blowing a lot of tires up there. And it's a pretty costly thing. On the transfer station, we've got a rail siding up there. We can connect with the rail. We can't go very fast or very far probably, but it is tied in with the outside rail lines, CSI or whatever that freight hauler is. We can haul to Lakeville, to Millburn, then it switches on to a mainline train that can go across the country. And I think we'd be doing ourselves an awful disservice, not perhaps, in my time, which is very short, but I think we'd be very foolish to do away with that rail, with that transfer station. And whatever the town or the planners could do to find the proper use for it, if we stop using it for solid waste, it is a valuable asset and I would hate to see it go. Thank you.
I agree with you. I think it's something that we need to save for our future in some form or fashion. So, do I have any other public comment? So, we'd look for a vote from the board this evening to be able to allow the town manager to fully develop the contract and bring it back for a final vote to the Board of Selectmen. The town of Bourne would like to be able to know that as they move forward on their contracts as well because they only have so much airspace that they're allowed to commit to folks. This is a projected airspace for the future, meaning capacity, airspace is capacity. So...
I would move to authorize the town manager to continue with the negotiations. In addition to thank him for the excellent work, it's a great relief not to have our $90 a ton fee that we had waving in front of us.
Okay, so there's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any further discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. The ayes have it. Unanimous. Great, thank you very much. This was incidentally part of one of the issues that this board collectively worked on at our retreat this past year and asked for it to come to fruition sooner versus later, meaning this fall, for a contract that would be expiring in 2015. I'd like to commend the town manager and the director of the Department of Public Works for pursuing this and coming back in a timely fashion.
Thank you.
Okay, the next up is approve request for a change of manager, Midway Trap and Skeet Club, 284 All Meeting House Road, East Falmouth. Mr. Pimento is the change of manager. We do have a positive reference from the police department of reviewed the application, Midway Trap and Skeet. Change of manager name on the all-alcoholic license, a restaurant license is to John Pimento. This department has no problem with approving the change. Just for disclosure purposes, I'm the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. Good evening, Mr. Pimento.
Good evening.
Does the board have any questions?
No.
My only question would be, are you tip-strained, tip-strained, or a service there as well?
Yes, I am. I have been for over 18 years.
Okay, great.
The approval of the request for change of manager, John Pimento.
I have a motion.
Second.
In the second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. The ayes have it. Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is a discuss a vote, LIP application for 55 Stevens Lane. There is a, for the applicant before us this evening is here, and there is a referral in here from, from the LIP committee did meet. The LIP advisory committee discussed the above proposal at a meeting on November the 27th and decided to recommend to the Board of Selectmen to support the project. As a co-sponsor, the applicant should be in contact with your office to schedule a meeting. The date, the Board of Selectmen, at the LIP committee meeting, the date of December the 17th was discussed. It is recommended the applicant be prepared to discuss the following items as part of this presentation. The choice of the monitoring agent, local preference, and outreach conducted by the applicant to the abutters in the large neighborhood prior to meeting with the selectmen. Mr. Galasso, welcome.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Michael Galasso. I'm a project manager with TRI, The Resource Inc., which is a nonprofit affordable housing developer of this project. If we recall, this project was before you, back in August, for a grant of $41,000 from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And as the chairman has said, it was heard by the LIP subcommittee on November 27th. This is a two-bedroom, one-bath, 900-square-foot, single-family home on Stevens Lane, which is off of Jones Road. It's been vacant for a number of years. It was formally foreclosed. It will be renovated using some of our funds and funds from the Affordable Housing Trust and turn into an energy-efficient, single-family home with insulation, new windows, heating systems, and a roof. It will be offered for sale to a affordable household, making no more than 80% of the median income, at a price of $150,000 upon its full renovation. We have had discussions with the Falmouth Housing Trust, Annie's here this evening, about being the monitor agent for the project. We have agreed to provide for local preference as permitted by law, and we have notified all the abutters in the neighborhood about the project. So, I'm here this evening to answer any questions we may have and to thank staff for getting this project to you in a quick manner.
So, you answered the question of the monitor agent, as well as, have you had any meetings or tried to publicize any meetings with the folks in the neighborhood?
We sent a notice to all the abutters of a meeting that was held in our office back in November.
Okay. And any of the board have any other issues? Any questions?
Just to confirm, the Falmouth Housing Trust has agreed to take on the monitoring agent role?
We have had negotiations with Annie. She sent us a proposal today, and we haven't finalized it yet, but our intent is to finalize an agreement with them to be the monitoring agent.
I think it is very important that there be a monitoring agent for this for us to proceed. We want to make sure that's stipulation of our agreement.
And incidentally, it's very important that we have a local monitoring agent.
Absolutely.
We've had some problems in just the recent past with a property over in Dillingham that had a state monitoring agent, and it fell off the radar screen, and it really took a, we almost lost the unit to affordability because we had no intention to that. So, any other questions? Yes, Heather?
No questions, just a point of information. There are two more steps left before the project, you know, meets its fruition. It is a challenging process. The Falmouth Housing Committee, as the Falmouth Affordable Housing Advisor, has to meet and officially refer the project as well. So, there are two required approvals by the town, the Board of Selectmen, and the Affordable Housing Committee. I believe they meet later this week for that. So, there's the two signatories on the LIP application to the state, and that would go up with all parties involved, the Affordable Housing Committee, the Board of Selectmen, and the applicant would together submit the application to the state, and that follows by a permitting process for the zoning board of appeals.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to approve, maybe including the local monitoring agent?
So will.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next up is approved request for change of manager, Cashpoint Secondhand Dealer's License, from the police department, from Lieutenant Reed. I've reviewed the change of manager request for Roman Vitas...
Venitsky.
Venitsky, okay. On behalf of Cashpoint, 286 T-Ticket Highway, conducted a query check, the department has no problem with approving the request. Yes, sir. Roman, welcome.
My name is Edgar Gavorgon. I'm the current manager of Cashpoint and also the owner. I don't know if I was the one that made a mistake. I actually wanted to change the DBA to a corporation, and my understanding was that I have to apply for a new license in which Roman would be a manager. But I got a letter from the selectmen's office that said that there's a meeting for change of manager.
So, you want to...
There is actually in your packet, a new business certificate under the name of CP Enterprises.
There is nothing in our packet that...
I, I'm sorry about that. I submitted it to the office.
No, that isn't it.
Oh. Application for license.
The name of the business is CP Enterprises instead of Cashpoint.
Unfortunately, it's not advertised properly, yeah.
Unfortunately, we're caught because we didn't advertise it as the, you know, change of name, change of license, application for a license under the new name. And tonight, we only had a change of manager. So, unfortunately, by the open meeting law, we would have to reschedule this and advertise it in the proper fashion.
Can we, can you approve the change of manager since Roman is the one that's working there until we can switch the...
We can make the change of manager this evening, and then you can come in to change the name, application for that. How's that?
Okay, yeah. That's great.
So, is he here this evening?
Yes, he's right here.
Okay, great. It's all right. I just didn't know if the board wanted to ask any questions. So, because it's on the, on the agenda as a change of manager, we can entertain that? Do I have a motion?
Do we have to change the name of the business on this application, then back to Cashpoint?
Well, we're only going to take up the change of manager, so it will remain the Cashpoint, and then he would come back to change it to CP Enterprises. Okay?
I would move to approve the change of manager.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you can straighten that out with the office and go back with the other application, you'd be all set. Thank you. Next up is discussing a water filtration study. Mr. Jack? Or is it Mr. Jack, or you handling it?
I think he's just stepping in, Mr. Chairman. He was out in the hallway for a moment.
Come right up, yep. Julian's really good at that. He could help you.
Indeed. We have some extra time. No problem there. I think the easel as well, I think. Oh, thank you. Selectman Jones.
Can you see it now?
I can see it fine.
It takes a minute to warm up.
What you have this evening is an update of the Long Pond feasibility study for possible filtration versus disinfection alternatives. You've had a brief in very recently. The report of the feasibility study was supposed to be due this month, but it has been delayed, so the board will not be getting that until January. So, this evening's presentation is an update that's going to include the pilot study itself, what processes were evaluated from a bench top study, as well as the actual pilot study at Long Pond, what the recommended alternatives are, the associated costs with those alternatives will be provided tonight. And then, come January, after the report is done and the board has had a chance to review the report, we'll revisit this with another discussion. At that time, it's expected that we would start deliberating as to what alternative the town wants to take. We have to take one or the other. So, if I was to put some emphasis on the presentation this evening, there are going to be alternatives for disinfection only, and that is one of the options that the town has, and multiple options for filtration with multiple levels of protection and risk and multiple levels of cost. And then, following the presentation, I will be giving you some basic information on what you may be considering for funding opportunities. So, no decisions are expected this evening. Those deliberations would actually start in January, but it is expected that we would have to, number one, make a decision on which option, and then, number two, decide on how to fund whatever option is selected. So, here with me this evening are Tatum Howard and CH2M Hill. They are the two consulting firms that are working collaboratively on the project. So, we have Patrick O'Neil, who's a professional engineer from Tatum Howard, and Dr. Russ Ford, who is representing CH2M Hill, and they'll go through the presentation and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ray. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As Ray mentioned, we're here to update you on the Long Pond filtration study tonight. Down for now, but I can put it up later. The immediate concerns for Long Pond is the regulatory aspect of the long-term II Enhanced Surface Water Treatment Rule. Deadline for compliance for that was October 2012. The LT2, as it's referred to, requires the additional disinfection to address cryptosporidium treatment. Within the regulations, there's provisions for extension of that deadline if capital improvements are required. And a request was submitted to DEP for that extension, and DEP would not grant the full year, two-year extension. They would grant only till June of 2013, knowing that this study was going on and knowing that your next funding mechanism would be April Town Meeting. So, they allowed to go till June to finish this study and to see how the town went forward as far as funding whatever option you chose to take. The other compliance issues are the Stage II Disinfection Byproducts Rule. That rule initiated new sampling starting this month for the town. It's a different method by which the town monitors for disinfection byproducts on the system. It's a little more stringent than the prior regulations, and with the levels of disinfection that are required right now with the untreated source, it could become an issue in the future as far as compliance. And the one that you've been living with for many years is the Surface Water Treatment Rule and the Filtration Avoidance Criteria for Unfiltered Systems, the waiver criteria. You're currently monitoring continuously, daily, raw water, your treatment technique and distribution samples for compliance. Any one of those criteria could void the waiver and require filtration. Even if, oops, you choose to address LT2 in a disinfection compliance construction project, you're not out of the woods as far as the Surface Water Treatment Rule and the filtration waiver. If you violate the waiver, you'll still have to add filtration later on. So, keep that in mind as you select your options going forward. The Long Pond Supply, as you know, is very vital to the town of Falmouth, supplies 50 to 60% of the demand annually. In 2011, supplied 57%. Typical pumping rate is almost 8 million gallons a day. That's the output from the plant. Max pumping, 2012 was 7.1 million gallons, 2011, 6.5 million gallons a day, and 2010, 7.8. So, you can see how valuable it is as a source in meeting demands. One of the items that we requested to look at as part of the study is bank filtration. Bank filtration isn't used much in the Northeast. The concept is, if you have a surface water body, whether it's a pond or river, in lieu of withdrawing directly from the water body itself, as you do here at Long Pond, you install the, either galleys in the bank of the pond or wells and intake structures, and you withdraw the water at some distance from the pond, taking advantage of whatever filtration you can get through the natural soils, and also get a little bit of mixing with groundwater to improve the water... to improve the water quality. And it typically used on sources that are subject to periodic upset like rivers that get a lot of sediment periodically, and that provides a certain level of pretreatment for turbidity and suspended solids. Long Pond is not subject to great upset, but it does occasionally have turbidity and obviously algae events you've seen in the past. There's a couple of aspects of that, that study of that has not been done at all as far as putting wells in the banks of the pond. There were some studies regarding developing groundwater in the watershed, which I'll get to later, but as far as the mechanism and the viability of withdrawing water close to the pond in the bank filtration mode has not been looked at. So it requires additional study, which also would mean DEP, as far as what they would grant you for treatment credit in a bank filtration mode, has not been established The other part of that, it would require a significant alteration of pond shore possibly if you're trying to construct large infiltration galleys. That's a large construction project on the shores of the pond. If you do it by a well construction infiltration setup, it's a little less disruptive, but there's still quite a bit of work that would have to be done on the pond shore to affect bank filtration. The other aspect is, once you move from the surface water supply and withdraw from the groundwater nearby, you're influencing everything behind that, which is the wetlands and the vernal pools. And I'll put up the map a little later, but there's this significant amount of wetlands around the pond, at least five certified vernal pools to be protected. So moving off of the pond as far as the withdrawal goes, puts you in play as far as potential impacts with those which have to be considered if you want with a bank filtration.
Could I ask a question, Patrick? If you, if you were to withdraw water like that, say, from the galleys or those wells, what happens to the water in the pond? Does that, does it not disturb the water in the pond because you're pulling it from somewhere else?
You would induce flow. The idea is to induce flow from the pond into whatever structure you're withdrawing from. So you'd take advantage of that water, but it gets some filtration through the gravels between where the intake structure is and the actual pond shore. So you're pretty much getting surface water, like you don't get taste and odor removal. You'd get particulate removal from the soils, but the other aspects of the surface water you would still influence in whatever water you withdrew.
Just a follow-up to Pat's question. I don't know if there's any sort of scientific stuff done, but I know, I've talked with residents around Coonamessit Pond in the past, and they've described that they can see when the Coonamessit well comes online because they do notice a drop in the pond level as a result, or at least that's their anecdotal observation. But I do have a question. You say additional testing is going to be required. Are we testing bank filtration as part of this study?
No, we're not.
I guess the question then is why not? Because this is one of the questions that I asked when we started this process, was were we going to study this? And I was told that we were going to cover all options, and this was one of them. So the question is, is why aren't we looking at this option?
It was reviewed as the concept, but no field work was included in the scope of work. It was just the concept of what would be required and what is the viability of...
When April comes and we have to make decisions, this isn't going to be one of our options, then? Is that what I'm to understand?
Well, I'll go one step further. What bank filtration doesn't get you is LT2 compliance, which is the bottom line. If you wanted to build bank filtration to improve, you know, the suspended solid turbidity, you'd still have to build disinfection for LT2 at a minimum. So you'd spend the money on bank filtration plus the money on LT2. So that's pretty much the evaluation is. It doesn't buy you any relief from compliance with either the surface water treatment rule or LT2.
Okay. I'm a little confused, though. LT2 is the additional treatment, that's not filtration?
Additional disinfection only.
Additional disinfection only. So, I mean, one of the discussions, or the discussion we've had surrounding this whole thing was, do we add additional, do we add filtration and/or additional treatment? Correct? I mean, that's where we're going with this whole study, right?
Right.
Okay. So the potential for bank filtration is that if it worked, we wouldn't need to create our own filtration, correct? When we talk about removing suspended solids, that this would be an option instead of building an actual filter?
No, it won't get you out of compliance with either LT2 or the rest of the surface water treatment.
Well, we'd still need additional treatment?
Yes.
I guess, and maybe I'm confusing you folks, but maybe I'm confused myself. I just want to clarify this before we go too much further. There are two things that have been discussed, is that we either need to add additional filtration, or, excuse me, we either have to add filtration or a second level of treatment or both, right?
Yes, disinfection to meet LT2.
So treatment.
Or filtration to meet the surface water treatment rule.
Okay. So one of the...
This does not get you either of those.
It doesn't get...
In itself, no.
It wouldn't address the filtration issue?
No.
So why is it even on the, on the chart?
I think it's coming off.
We were asked to look at it as an option. It is a pretreatment option to reduce, you know, suspended solids, but it doesn't eliminate the need for the rest of the treatment trains that go with surface water.
I guess, I'm a little confused because, again, this was a question that was asked months ago, but nobody said, well, we're not going to look at it because, it was just said, yes, we're going to look at all options. So I guess there are a lot of folks, myself included, who I think have been thinking all along that this was going to be one of the options explored as a, especially in consideration of the fact, or at least one of the thoughts, is that it might be cheaper just to sink some wells and use the natural filtration as opposed to building a filtration plant. And then if we need any additional treatment, then we can, you know, add that as needed. I guess if, if this is not a viable option, that's fine, but I'm still left with questions in my mind as to why didn't, why didn't somebody say that sooner? I guess is why I'm confused at this point.
You're not the only one, because I was under the same assumption.
Okay, so it wasn't just me?
No, no, I was under the same assumption. Yeah, I, I...
So I guess that's a question here. Is this a viable option?
It is not for compliance.
Taking it out of my packet.
The other aspect was groundwater development in the watershed, which probably plays in a little more of what you're talking about, is moving away from the pond completely and separating yourself from the surface water and becoming a groundwater source. Prior studies done back at 1990, 1991, looked at developing groundwater wells within the watershed. Testing was done. I'm not sure whether you can see this. Obviously, Long Pond. Testing was done on eastern side and the western side of the pond with test wells, and the study identified potentially developing up to eight MGD in the southeast corner of the watershed. Only problems, regulatory requirements have changed since that testing was done. And as you can see from this map, this area was identified right here for development. There's vernal pools here, there's a vernal pool here, and the green circles you see are all, all wetlands and/or vernal pools. So the development of groundwater in this area would be very limited because of the associated potential impact between the groundwater withdrawal and the wetlands.
Is there anything on the opposite side, Patrick? The west side that's, I don't want to get in front of you.
The, the study included testing through this. Just geologically speaking, the west side is moraine, fairly low yield, fine silts, clays. So this is moraine. The moraine extends to the north of the pond, and the easterly side is outwash, which is high-yield aquifer material. On this side, the wells showed those fine materials, fairly low yield, but also high iron and manganese, up to 17 parts of iron in the test wells here. To move to a groundwater source, you're going to be rolled into the new source approval process, which would require environmental review of every well, and every well would have to be pump-tested. So you're looking at developing, you know, over 10, maybe size 15 wells. It's likely in the eastern side, if you could get them in without impacting the vernal pools and the wetlands, and then be subject to environmental ru, environmental review. Under the current environmental regulations, you might have heard of the SWIMME process that the state's going through now, the Sustainable Water Management Initiative. They're looking very closely at groundwater withdrawals, the impact on surface water bodies, rivers, river flows. So it's getting much more difficult to develop groundwater sources and even maintain sources you have that may have impacts on surface water bodies or stream flow.
Pat, you got another question?
One more question. Have we looked at the possibility of getting more water from the MMR? I mean, I know it's not enough, but could there be enough that it might alter what we might do going forward with Long Pond?
Well, right now, the allocation of water from the MMR, they have three million gallons a day available, and the allocation is a million for Falmouth, and then a half a million each for Bourne Sandwich, Mashpee, and the base itself. Not to say on any given day, if Falmouth needed more than a million because of emergency, they couldn't take it, but the allocation in the agreement, as I know it, is set up like that. So they have three million distributed that way.
Well, I was just thinking about the fact that they sit on the Sagamowlands. There must be a lot of water under there.
Yeah, we're actually doing a study of that right now for the, for the co-op, but yeah, there is a lot of water there. But right now, they have capacity at three million gallons a day.
That's all they have.
I'm not sure if there's any, I don't know of any provisions to increase that at this point.
Or build wells on the, on the base.
Right.
Additional wells. No, that's not in the planning anywhere.
No.
Okay.
So as I mentioned, groundwater development would be very difficult on the eastern side of the pond because of all the wetlands. You'd have to build a lot of wells to distribute the withdrawals and prevent groundwater drawdown and then impacts on the, on the wetlands. The other part of it is, the entire watershed is listed as estimated or priority habitat with the Mass Natural Heritage and Dangerous Species Program, which again brings another set of review as far as any work that's done, whether it's the groundwater development or even the treatment plan if you chose to build, is subject to their review because it's habitat area.
I do have another question. If we're doing some kind of wells around the pond, don't, doesn't the permitting and when, how long it takes to get them online, isn't it extremely long?
It, it has been very long. Crooked Pond well took over 10 years, mostly because of the perceived notion that the well was going to impact Crooked Pond itself. So that environmental review process gets extended if they think there's going to be impacts. The other piece of it is, right now, you're permitted to withdraw from the pond. If you switch to go to groundwater sources, that's a new permit. So you'd have to re-permit, where you're, you're given the amount of water you take from the pond now, but if you go to a groundwater source, you'd have to get a new permit for that withdrawal. Just on a, the premise of developing, say, nine to 11 wells, you're looking at over $9 million just to develop the groundwater source, piping, electrical fee, and then run it through the existing corrosion control at the plant, which would be pH adjustment and disinfection using those facilities. But it's still an expensive prospect to develop all those wells in the watershed, if you could even develop them. You're likely looking at treatment in the future, if not currently, even with the groundwater source. As you know, Crooked Pond, Coonamessit Wells are both being treated because of groundwater conditions. The zone of contribution, as you can see, a limited area, you have industrial areas on Gifford Street, but the zone of contribution to the northeast headed towards Maris Pond, and that area is highly developed. You have onsite sewage disposal, including the former, former high school septic system. One thing that was identified during that previous study was elevated nitrates to the north, and also the area that was proposed for development had higher-than-normal nitrates, 2.5 or so, which is elevated, and that was 20 years ago. So water quality could still be an issue if, if you tried to develop groundwater. As I mentioned, the western side of the pond was lower yield and had very high iron and manganese, which would require treatment in itself. The other potential threats is the former auto salvage yards that were on Gifford Streets. They've been since removed, but they were previously identified as listed sites, disposal sites with DEP. And then the question of emerging contaminants is still out there with any groundwater source or surface water source for that matter. And depending on where you put the wells, you still have the question of groundwater under the influence. If a, if a groundwater source is under the influence of surface water, you're thrown into same treatment process as you would be required pumping directly from the pond. So chances are with the extended pumping task that would be required for any groundwater source near the pond, we'd have to take that into account to look to see if it was under the influence of the surface water to determine whether it needed the filtration treatment. And that'll be a question DEP will be looking, be answered.
I have one more question.
Sure.
I listened to a presentation from an elected official from Australia, and I realize this is a little bit off what we're talking about, but she was talking about all the money and the planning that Australia got into when they did that desalinization. And now, after 20 years of doing it, it's all not good anymore. They had to abandon it and go back to finding other water resources. So I guess my question is, how do we know that Long Pond, over the long haul, will be, will be always there to provide water? I mean, do, I mean, is it something that is, I can't say guarantee it, but do we believe that, that Long Pond will always have water and that water source will always be available to us over whatever period of time we expect it to? Is that a reasonable assumption?
Physically, water in the pond, or the, or the quality of the water, or the...
No.
Physically, that it'll be full of water?
That it will be full of water that can be then be filtered if, in fact, filtration is the way we go. I mean, can we be assured over the long term that there will be water in Long Pond?
I would say yes. It's been, it's, it's pretty much a reflection of the groundwater. It's not a perched, like you would see on other lakes where the water's separate. This is a reflection of the groundwater. So the water level is sustained by the groundwater flow. It's been the water source for the town since the late 1800s, and it fills up and drains down annually with, again, with pumping and the groundwater normal fluctuations.
So it comes from the groundwater as opposed to some other source, like all of these places out in the west, that have dried up and have no water anymore, something like that?
They depend on surface runoff or tributary flow from a river, which again is dependent on runoff, whereas this is not. There's no tributary rivers to this, there's no outlet. It's pretty much a reflection of the groundwater. It is very sustainable, I guess, if you want to use that term.
Yeah, that's my question. The long-term sustainability of having water in Long Pond.
Treatment goals, through the process that we've been working, we've met with the DPW and the Board of Health a number of times going through the study and talked about very aspects of this study, one of which is the goals. The minimum was to meet LT2. You're, you're pretty much in non-compliance right now, operating under an extension, but you, you have to, at a minimum, meet LT2 by June of next year at this point. And also, stage-two disinfection byproducts rule remains to be seen how well you do with the sampling from that, but continued use of, you know, chlorine... the sampling from that, but continued use of, you know, chlorine on an unfiltered supply makes you in jeopardy of not maintaining compliance with the stage two rule as well. The preferred goal was to meet LT2, meet the stage two disinfection byproducts rule, and address other, other water quality concerns. Pathogen removal, tastes, odor, color, algae and algae toxins, reduction of organics and the, and the associated triolomethanes and halic, halic acidic acid formation, providing a stable water quality, and flexibility to meet future water quality criteria.
Need to ask you one question. How is it almost humanly possible that we can meet this LT2 by June of this year? I mean, even if we approve something at April Town meeting, how could we ever get it implemented by June?
No, the, the regulations allow for a two-year extension from the October date if capital improvements are required. DEP would not provide that, not knowing if the town was going to take action for compliance, so they only granted till June. And their, their approval states that they'll reevaluate compliance at that time. So at that time, if, I guess if you haven't taken action, they, I assume give you a consent order to take action for compliance, or if you have, they'll give you the extension so you could build whatever facilities you want to build.
Okay.
So, but they just wouldn't go out the two years right up, right up front. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Ford to talk about, more about the testing that was done.
So, as Patrick started off telling you, you know, we did a lot of evaluation, and we were here back in, I think it was August, when we were here in August, end of July, talking about the treatment test, testing we've done to date. So we tested, the one thing about surface water plants, we have to use coagulants to get the solids out of the, so we, on the bench scale, we did a lot of work on the bench scale, looked at coagulants, tested three of them. Probably.
There it goes.
There we go. We tested two oxidation processes. The oxidation processes are needed, A for disinfection, also to look at things like iron and manganese control. So we looked at those on the bench scale to see which ones would make sense for future pilot testing. We looked at five disinfection processes on the bench scale to narrow those down, looked at chlorine, chlorine dioxide, looked at ozone, you know, looked at chloramines, looked at, thought about UV in terms of testing and evaluating and seeing which ones would fit. The big thing is, as you start to see with all these treatment trains, I think some discussion came up, there's a lot of combinations, a lot of processes that can go together to get you to meet those goals that were put on, that we saw on the previous page. We looked at something called ion exchange, which is MYAX, which is a magnetic ion exchange resonant, removes organics in the water. Another process that's out there, available, to try to give you a full view. Looked at membrane technologies, microfiltration and ultrafiltration membranes, which physically remove particulate matter, you know, turbidity and things from the water. We looked at granular media filtration in terms of, you know, a regular filter plant would use, you know, so they have anthocite and sand or carbon and sand, which would physically remove the particles. I said activated carbon. And we looked at, you know, the coagulation processes and the, the disinfection processes and the MYAX process, looked at those, and we also looked at how they would impact the formation of disinfection byproducts. So as Patrick mentioned, that the stage two regulation is different than the current stage one, the previous stage one DVP regulation. So the way you look at your DBPs now is at a specific location, that location has to meet the requirement, whereas prior to this, it was an annual average over your entire system. So we looked at these processes to see if they could lower the disinfection byproducts and which way you could do it most effectively. So, and that gives you some additional data. So in the, in the end, we looked at 22 treatment trains from the bench scale testing that we were able to lay out. Fortunately, you know, myself and others, we have worked with all these trains, so we were able to look at them and develop a design criteria based on historical knowledge of the way they would perform on water sources like yours, like yours. And then from that, we were able to narrow them down to trains that were in the pilot test. The pilot testing is necessary to prove the process out. You know, the DEP, we gave them a protocol on how we're going to look at it, did two seasons of testing. Tested overall seven treatment trains. And this remote Nair is not having fun. The, so we looked at coagulation, you know, followed by granular media filtration, and looked at ozone in the train to see how it would impact. The one thing about ozone in a treatment train is it usually helps the filter performance. We wanted to make sure it did that and proved out the concept. Sometimes it can actually hinder it, depending on the water. Cold water is different than warm water. Surface water plants are very tricky that way. So we looked at dissolved air flotation, you know, we quite, dissolved air flotation, essentially it's a classification process that floats particles out. So algae, which is already in the water, which floats around, likes to float, so you use DAF to float it out, as opposed to trying to settle it in the process. And then that provides the water, we looked at that same combination with granular media filtration with and without ozone again. We looked at direct membrane filtration. So, and this is one of those things where, you know, the initial screening of 22 trains, we developed initial screening costs. And direct filtration by itself with membranes tested out, so well, if we can do this with no coagulant or a little bit of coagulant, this would be a really cost-effective treatment train. So we test that because we think it looks good on paper. That's why we pilot test to make sure things work out. I'll give the results in a, just setting you up for the big results. The coagulation membrane filtration, so we looked at coagulation ahead of that. We had coagulation, dissolved flotation, and membrane filtration. Once again, just to keep comparing different trains. We had a lot of different trains, looked at GAC filtration and absorption, to look at using G, granular activated carbon to just absorb some of the organics and absorb taste and odor causing compounds physically. So, as I said, we did eight weeks in the winter and eight weeks in the summer to capture the cold and the warm water, try to capture as much water-changing water quality. It's still, it's still a snapshot in time, but based on historical data, historical water temperatures, you know, we got representative water, so we feel pretty good about the results of that. We used optimized coagulant dosages and loading rates, you know, we were able to do that to figure out, you know, based on the bench, we got some idea, look at the loading rates and the filters and the classification processes. We looked at organic removal, looked at metals in terms of, you know, that's in the We did more disinfection byproduct testing now on the actual pilot scale work, so we were looking at coagulants, ozone, test DVP formation and make sure we're, you know, we can meet the regs with that. And then from that, we used it to develop design criteria to actually streamline the cost that we did initially. We had 22 trains, we got them down to seven, but they were based on our assumptions, based on the water quality. We pilot test, and we use that to make sure the design criteria we use for the costing makes sense. And in some cases, you have to modify it to the good in terms of we did better than we thought, in some cases you have to modify it the other way because it doesn't perform as well as you thought, given the water quality. So the other option we, you know, we talked about, and we, you know, we didn't have to pilot, we didn't pilot test LT2 options because those, for example, the two options available are UV and chlorination. Pilot testing of UV is not necessary, given the number of systems that are out there. It's more of a desktop evaluation, looking at the cost. We know it works, we know it inactivates the pathogens of concern, so there's no need to spend time pilot testing it. The only reason you would pilot test it would be look at operational impacts of the UV system on the source for a long period of time, but we know it works, so it's not a matter of knowing it works. We also looked at, you know, ozone, UV, and chlorination. So, oh, oh. Go back. Go back. There we go. Oh, that's not working. Small one on the left should go back, huh? Here we go. So, so the one thing with LT2 compliance options are providing disinfection. All right, that's the goal of LT2, is provide disinfection for Cryptosporidium, Jordia, and your viruses. You know, you're currently providing protection for Jordia and Cryptosporidium viruses as part of your unfiltered compliance. Crypto is the new one that was added. So we looked at these two different options in terms of what could be done to provide that, and that would put you in compliance with LT2. But keep in mind, as Patrick said, they don't address anything else. Doesn't address taste and odor, doesn't address, you know, if the flavor is lost or filtration things of that sort. So this is just pure disinfection. Filtration options, talked about, you know, coagulation. I went through these already. I went, I went through these processes already, but I wanted to just make sure so. So this is what we, we, we costed out. All the filtration options, dissolved air flotation, we have what's called direct filtration, which is no clarification process, so we would add chemicals, we'd mix, go right to filters. That saves you the footprint, you know, on that. Looked at membrane, microfiltration treatment and all that. We did all that stuff, and we developed the cost, project costs for this. Project costs include the construction cost of the project, includes engineering fees, includes, you know, those kind of things in there, not just, so the project costs is a total, total project all in for start to finish on the project. So you can see from here, and we also calculated operating maintenance costs. So, because each process has different amount of chemicals, different amount of power, different amount of labor needed, components, replacement parts, placement of the media, depending on the process, we factored out all in there, and at this initial guess here, this is where, you know, I guess, but this is at the initial stage, this is where we actually look at the project cost. So this is, you know, you have projects ranging from the LT2 compliance options of, you know, 16.3 million up to projects ranging up to about 40, $47 million for the coagulation, DAF, ozone, GAC options. Other considerations and the capital cost of the finished water transmission mains of the project, they currently date back to the late, you know, 1800s into the mid 1900s. So the useful life of those pipes are pretty much coming up, so if you're going to build a new plant, you might want to seriously consider the fact that you have pipes that are almost 100 years old feeding the water out of them and time to upgrade it. And the intake and screening, same thing. It's been there, it's been doing a very good job. If you're building a new plant for new intakes, you know, cleaning, fixing the intake improves power, improves water quality, providing different depths, makes things easier to treat. So we, we looked at this, yes.
Can I ask you a question? You have, you know, project cost, and then you come over here to the present worth.
Yeah.
How do you, how do you get from the 38 million to the 52 million?
The present worth cost represents the project cost in today's dollars plus the O&amp;M cost based on 20 years at 5% interest, which would then get you to today's dollars in terms of what the project would cost you today if you had to put money in the bank to operate the whole facility for 20 years without anything with all in. Obviously, as you operate facilities, you know, over time, it's in your O&amp;M budget, but, so this gives us a way to compare. This, it's critical to do this because we sometimes get focused on the project costs, and we sometimes don't look at the operating costs, and it's nice to understand, you know, what it's going to take to early operate a facility going into the future, so everybody's on the same page. And sometimes, you know, the, you know, operating costs can be deceptive too because they look low and, you know, they're all great, and then, you know, you, you put them in, and you want to know that. So it's important to do that, and you can look at the options, but, so that's, that's how we get to the present worth cost.
Okay. Thank you.
So, and I was saying, so then, so this chart kind of sums up kind of where we were. You know, we did the piloting, and we did all the stuff, and the green dots represent things that are good, and the red dots represent things that are not so good. So looking at the key criteria that were developed based on working with the entire committee, Board of Health, Ray, everybody, if you look at reducing disinfection byproducts, everything tested, everything studied, I should say, can do that, except for the UV chlorine option, which is the LT2 compliance, because it doesn't do anything for disinfection byproducts, it just disinfects. Okay? But it doesn't, you're still going to have that same amount of chlorine you add now to carry residual through your distribution system, so you're not going to impact your disinfection byproducts. Compliant with LT2, everything we looked at, comply with LT2 in the second column. Taste and odor, which is something that's mainly the cause of algae, because of the algae in your water, you know, algae, you know, breaks down, metabolizes, causes taste and odor causing compounds. You, you know, basically, there's only a couple of trains up there that can do that, and those are the trains that include ozone. All right, ozone will oxidize the taste and odor causing compounds, provide you, you know, a reduced taste and odor. So the other treat, trains that didn't have that, you know, they don't comply with that. The effectively handling algae. The one thing currently is you currently are able to treat the pond to minimize algal growth, but you still have blooms, you're in a filtered source. Going into the future, nobody, you know, we're not sure what, you know, what will or will not be the disposition of treating the pond, you know, will you, if you build a plant, will you still be allowed to do that or not? So the question is, if you have algal blooms that increase in number, you have to have treatment processes that can handle the algae, or else the treatment process basically gets stocked up, and then the treatment process doesn't, doesn't work. So you look at that, the dissolved air flotation processes are really the only ones that are directly applicable to handling algae. And the pilot, pilot plant performance, we did this, everything with dissolved air flotation worked great. The direct filtration, these two coagulation, GMF chlorine and coagulation membrane, by themselves, well, the, the third one down, did not perform as expected on, on the water source and did not meet the operational criteria that we'd like to see for a well-operated filter plant. So from that, direct filtration, something that we wouldn't want to look at because the filters didn't perform very well under the, especially under the cold water conditions. The ozone coagulation, same thing, direct filtration with ozone in front, didn't perform well. UV and those two trains weren't tested, that they're in white, we know they, we know they will do their job in terms of disinfection, there wasn't need to test those. And direct membrane filtration with GAC down, basically adding no coagulant, didn't work. The membrane could not operate at the required loading rates, so we, you know, that process would not be feasible for a long-term consideration. And then it removes color. Basically, everything up top except for the UV chlorine option can remove color, so, you know, you could do that. So in a said and done, the only train that meets all your goals is the second one down, the coagulation, DAF, ozone, GAC, chlorine train. That will meet every goal, regulatory and aesthetic and, you know, that you'll want, you know, for your, for your water source, you know. Yes?
All right, this really isn't nothing for you to do. I've just, we've just been told 40 million dollars, 40 million, and I'm seeing a figure of 47, you know, on project cost, and it's just, that's all.
So the recommended?
Frank, just, we want to probably focus on that just for a second here, we get a couple of questions out here.
Um, we've got the red dots, but what's the context? I mean?
Versus, for example, you're showing the red dots, assuming that it doesn't effectively handle algae, but how effectively do we handle algae now? If, if this doesn't handle it compared to what? If, if we were compared the red dot to the, what we have today, is this better than what we have now? Or is this the Cadillac that we've talked about, you know, can we have a Chevy instead of a Cadillac?
Well, to put that in perspective, the UV, the UV chlorine option, the ozone UV chlorine option, basically the same thing you have now. No, no treatment for algae whatsoever, same thing. So it's not going to handle any better or worse, it's going to be there. The issue with UV is that if you have algae, UV is a light, is a light bulb. If you have particles in the water, they can reflect, they can, they can, they can move the disinfection, so your UV actually gets very ineffective. So if you get a high algal bloom, you have to, as you oversize your reactors to give yourself a lot of more inefficient UV light to get through there to make sure you disinfect the particle, because you're aiming for a particle that's two to five micron in size, and you're trying to hit with a UV light at 254 nanometers, and if you get a particle that blocks it, it just gets shielded. So, so that's the issue with algae on the UV. The, on the direct filtration processes, the process, you know, three and four in the train there, the filter, we're looking at, we were looked at, at in coagulant, a surface water plant, having a big granular media filter downstream. Classification process takes the algae out of the picture. If your algae, if your algal counts are 2,000, 3,000, 4,000 counts per mil, the filter will run slower, it'll plug up, me and direct filtration plants do do that. If the counts get up above 10, 15, 20,000 counts, the filter will basically stop running, and then you'll be backwashing the filter. You might, actually, if you didn't consider it ahead of time, you could actually get a situation where your filter can't be, you can't backwash the plant fast enough to keep the filters running. So that's a big issue. So if you're building a surface water plant, you're going to spend money to build one, and you know you have potential algal issues, it's prudent to make sure you address those issues now as opposed to building the plant and then realizing you can't do that. And that's what happens with a lot of, a lot of direct filtration plants, just as a side, were built, were built in the mid 80s when the drinking water regulations were, you know, filter- were, you know, filter work tabidity of, you know, one N T U or point five. And now it's point three N T U ninety-five percent of the time, you know? So from one N T U, you know, the terms are to point three, it's a big difference and the filters, so if you have algal, algal issues, not to mention other things associated with algae, you know, algal, you know, they can just clog up, they do cause taste and odor. So removing them before you actually lice them, when you add a disinfectant, you actually can lice the algae and then that removes the metabolites, the jasmine and M I B that cause taste and odor. If you can remove them from the water, it helps with taste and odor just by physically removing the algae before it does anything.
I'm, I'm interested in this second to last option here, the ozone UV and chlorine.
Yep.
For the sake of discussion, it's like forty percent less than the highest option, but it appears that there's only one of the criteria that it does not meet with effectively handling the algae. Going off the same question that Brent had asked a little bit, number one is, how much chlorine? Is it more than we currently using, less than we're currently using? You're saying that it's going to meet the taste criteria, taste and odor, so would that be better than we currently have?
Well, it would be better than you currently have. The ozone would actually oxidize some of the issues in your water, therefore requiring less chlorine to be added to maintain your same disinfectant residuals at the end of your system. The concern with ozone UV chlorine is that it, it does, it does react with the natural organics in your water. And as long as, as long as the system is, continues to be disinfecting properly, you don't have an issue. But you still could have potential for coliform issues if, even though you've disinfected the water properly, it actually makes the water more biologically active by itself. So without any filtration downstream of it, it does, it could cause an issue. But besides that, but it does work, people do, people do it and you just maintain it and you add disinfectant. So yes, the answer is to use less chlorine, ozone, you'll use less chlorine than you currently do, that's why it handles taste and odor. Your ozone will handle taste and odor by itself and then you'll have less chlorine in the water than you'd have to maintain the same disinfection residuals. That's why it's better than the one right above it.
Right. And the, the only reason I'm saying this is it, the only one that, that of our options up there that would handle every one of the criteria is roughly sixty-three million and this handles every one but one criteria and it's thirty-five million dollars. So that's my question to you, is, you know, someone mentioned Chevrolet versus a Cadillac. Does it still get us to the point where we need to be or, or not?
It provides you with the disinfection requirements. If you maintain your filtration waiver, it provides you with that, but if you lose the filtration waiver, you'll still be back at square one, having to add filtration at some point in time.
Okay.
Yes.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Pat.
When you look at number two, with, especially with an O and M cost of like a million, one hundred thousand, and then you look at the one, the fourth one down, the difference there is taste and odor and algae. So I guess, would there be something that you could add to number four that might take care of the algae and the odor and, and not make it as costly as two?
Yeah, we actually tested this. If you add DAF to this train, you can handle the algae, but it doesn't still really address the taste and odor in turn unless you have ozone or something up front, so...
So when you compare those two, it costs, it costs far more to handle the taste and odor.
Yeah.
Which obviously is a big thing.
Right. And then if I, if I look at here...
For consumers.
To handle algae, I still have to add another five or six million dollars in project costs to, to get the DAF in there. So, and then it's going to go along with it, the O and M, so the present worth is going to change, not just on the capital, but also, because the DAF requires power to make the dissolved gas that dissolve, that floats out the algae.
You also said that removing the algae would help the taste and odor anyway.
Yes.
So in the top category, while it's a red taste and odor, it's still a better taste and odor situation than we're in right now because the algae's gone.
That's true.
So it's not...
Yeah, as long as the algae doesn't, as long as, as long as the algae gets floated out and doesn't metabolize on you, I mean, it's still going, it can decay or metabolize before you get to it and then you still have to deal with it. So algae, algae presents two problems. It's, it's a physical problem in treatment and it's all, and, and the taste of the algae can metabolize. So it's like getting rid of it helps not just the taste and odor, but also the process work more efficiently.
So if the, if the top option is taking care of the algae, we're quite a ways towards the...
Yeah, it's better than you are now.
Heather?
Is it possible to develop a plant that's modeled after the first option, that has the option to add the filtration later or the next level in the train?
Which option is that?
To meet the same as level two, the second. So if you went from level one, the first one, built that, is it possible to retrofit it to the second?
Hold the ozone?
Yes, yes you can.
Hold the ozone, right?
Yep, hold the ozone.
Save the ozone.
Yes.
Next phase if we're not satisfied with the first one.
You can, you can do that. So that's all in proper planning of the plant and laying out the hydraulics, which is critical because you'll have to leave space for it. It requires a hydraulic grade in the plant, you just leave the hydraulics.
Well, I'm interested in asking a couple of questions in the form of the process, how we move forward. Our warrant closes and, you know, even on the special by the end of January, you know, I'm sure that we would need to develop a design cost before we develop a full cost because by just throwing a number here, full cost, having seen some building projects within this community, when you just throw numbers out there, they don't always tend to be the exact number that comes in because you don't know the specifics of the design and, and what the infrastructure might be. How would we proceed through with the state in a scenario like that? Would they give us the opportunity to go through the design? I mean, I'd hate to put a final number, oh, we're just going to throw out a number of thirty-nine million to ask the voters, but we don't know whether that's really going to come in because our design costs aren't really that specific yet. So I'm going to throw it to you guys as experts to ask that.
I'm not real sure of the question as far as...
Well, the question is...
Is it an option?
My question is if we picked one of those options, say for instance, one of the filtration off, options like number one or, or number two, is there a way for us to put a number on what we would put at town meeting for design? In other words, to move forward? Because I don't think it's fair to the board or to the voter out there to come, give them a number of thirty-nine million and we're going to vote on it. We're not really positive that it's thirty-nine million because we haven't really designed it yet.
The, the cost estimate that Russell went over includes contingencies for design and construction services. So design could be separated out as a, a part of that, if you want that cost separate.
Okay. I think that, I mean, I think that's the way we have to proceed within this community. Keep in mind, we, we might have the best laid plans, but we still have to have buy-in from the community and this is a process. I think the buy-in comes about, of course, based on the fact that we're going to have to do some borrowing and that we want some firm numbers as we move forward. I think the design of the project also provides us some opportunities in finance and as we get out on the road here in our community as well. Is that going to take a lot more work from you folks to separate out what the design costs of these are? Okay. I think that's something that we like...
A budgetary number.
I think that's what we'd like to see.
Yeah, and, and the, and the report that's going to be submitted in January will have the, the more detailed design, more preliminary basis of the design per safe recommended process with breakdown of the actual cost. Each of those, those project costs were actually developed based on a parametric model that's been used to multiple projects of similar size. So we have the actual breakdown of every component, every process. So we would have that detail in the report, so you can see the breakdown of each process and the engineering costs and contingencies that were added.
And how far away do you think your final report is?
Mid-January. We're, we're pushing, I know it's tight and I apologize, but we ran extended pilot through September just to evaluate the membranes and try to capture maybe an algae event, which we didn't get much algae this year unfortunately, to test the processes, but, and then it was another month before our field report, lab reports came in and we've been pushing through the data to get you the, the basic information now.
Would you be able to separate out these design costs before that final report?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure.
Go ahead.
I just, I mean, want to go back to the emerging contaminants. It's been a while in the discussion and I don't remember everything we said about them. Should we be concerned about them in long pond or not? Is there a possibility that they can be found in the groundwater that, that, that actually fills up a long pond?
Yes.
And, yes. And so are they included in this?
They're into the first one, I'll defer to Russell in the second half.
Get a little closer to the microphone, I don't mind you double T-ing it.
I'm sure you've seen or heard of the Silent Spring study on the Cape for the groundwater sources. And most groundwater sources on the Cape had one emerging contaminant or the other, pharmaceuticals or, there was like eighteen contaminants they tested for. I believe your fresh pond well was part of the study, had one of the contaminants in it or maybe multiples, I'm not sure. But they are prevalent and this being a groundwater-fed source with pretty heavily developed recharge area to the north with twin site septic systems, chances are, yes, you, you could see something in the future. Where, where it's at, I'm not sure, but it, it is a risk. And it was one of the criteria that the Board of Health had asked about during the evaluation. And I'll let Russell speak to the components of the various processes that deal with it.
Yeah, the, you know, the, the pharmaceutical compounds, the, you know, they, they really get treated by three particular, three different mechanisms. Not all, and the thing is, not all of them are, they're not all biodegradable, they're not all removed by absorption, they're not all removed by membrane, they're all removed by a combination of different things. The train that gives you the best option is the ozone, you know, train two recommended because ozone by itself can break down a lot of the components. If you add peroxide to the ozone, we call them what's called an advanced oxidation process and we create a compound that can really just go and blow it apart. The GAC filters actually act as a medium that allows it to become biodegradable. Or you can absorb the compounds if they don't get removed by that. So you have pretty much all the flexibility to address many of the compounds with that, with those two treatment trains.
So it would be important to consider those various elements when, in making a decision that for the future, that it would cover us in terms of emerging contaminants, maybe with some slight modifications.
Bottom line is, out of all the options, we have not a one of these options that does not include chlorine.
You, you, you need to provide a disinfectioning distribution system to comply with the regulations. So your only few choices are chlorine or chloramines. And chlorine is the, if you can do it with chlorine, it's usually easier for a lot of systems because chloramines has its other set of issues and concerns when you look at it, so...
Well, the reason I ask that is because all along I was under the impression that if we did filtration, we would stop with the treatment. In other words, if we did a, 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 a good enough filtration plant, we would not still have to treat our water, disinfect it is the proper term, but evidently that's not the case.
The days of copper sulfate will be gone though, right?
That's the... Some options can handle the algae directly, some can.
So if we take one of that algae, we're still in the copper sulfate business. You, you would have to assess the magnitude of the algal growth in the pond to determine if it's an issue, you know, without any treatment. So right now, you're, you're controlled, that's all we really know.
Just an offbeat question, on O and M cost, is that just maintenance of the plant or does that include the five operators we have now?
That, those costs actually include the incremental operations staff needed to operate the facility, power, chemicals, energy, you know...
And it's going to be the same operators that are there now? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, plus, plus one or two of them include an extra operator because you...
So do we have any fixed costs that are currently, that we have that are in that O and M cost?
No, I need to...
Those are additional costs.
Yeah, those are additional costs.
Okay. That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead, Heather.
Just for a frame of reference, how many ozone plants are there in the Commonwealth or how prevalent is that treatment option throughout our region?
In the Commonwealth? I don't know.
Or for our type of system?
The ozone, I mean, ozone is in general around the, around the world, is pretty much standard in New England. I don't know in the Commonwealth, I know I've personally built two of them in New England, one up in Weymouth and one in New Haven, Connecticut, you know, and then one actually in S two, and three in actually Manchester, so myself. But there's ozone, ozone has been around since, you know, in the US, really been using it since, you know, early, you know, late, late nineteen eighties, people have been using it. So the technology's come along, you know, way pretty, pretty efficient in using it in terms of treatment.
We've designed and constructed at least three plants, groundwater, surface water, using ozone in the last ten years. It's becoming the, the oxygen of choice for both groundwater and surface water.
I'm going to ask one other question. This, this second to last option here, the ozone, the UV and the chlorine. If we build that, can we, if we went with that, could we still have the option again to add on filtration to take the algae out at a future time?
Thanks.
And design it that way?
I think you can design anything where you want. I mean, I think we can, I think you can.
You, you said that, you know, ultimately the state may came back, come back and say, well, you have to filter it. Can we design something that we have that ability to add that?
You can. You just need to make sure it's done upfront. Because an optimum, this is, this is a record, the optimum layout for ozone UV chlorine by itself would be substantially different than a layout that was going to be done to have DAF and filtration added to it separately. So you might actually incur additional cost just to have the flexibility to add it later on.
Mm-hmm. Okay. But otherwise we'd have to start from scratch the other way.
That would be correct.
Right. Okay. Any other questions here from the board? Any public comment? Come up.
It's Mark Finer in Precinct Six. It's my understanding that Long Pond also falls under the purview or the auspices of the DNR. And they had arranged to have the USGS do a survey on the pond and then design a peroxide treatment of the water in order to kill the algae. And they were basically escorted off the property. Secondly, to Brent's question, the cheaper processes here could be combined with bank filtration and would allow for maybe even a, a, a lower number there and maybe enough filtration to, um, meet, bring it up to snuff or whatever so to speak and still have us, you know, with a lower expenditure. I don't think that question was really answered. And thirdly, I can ask these questions at town meeting, but this one I'd really like an answer to. It's my understanding that Long Pond has been closed for the last three weeks and I'd like to know if that's true and if it is, what's wrong with the pond?
Well, I, I don't, we will get to the answer, but I don't know whether that's really pertinent to the question we're dealing with right now. Mr. Jack, do you want to answer that simply, whether the pond's closed or not at this time?
Long Pond's current operational status is as necessary and that's due to dissolved organics in the water. That is something that the pond does experience periodically. Bottom line, it's a living organism. It has a high organic content in it. There's a lot of natural organic matter. And as that starts to decay and metabolize, it creates what's known as color. And color are dissolved organics in the water. So currently, that's where it's at. We've had a number of color complaints or discolored water complaints out in the system and they are attributable to Long Pond. So until such time as, in, in the summertime, if we had this condition normally, it wouldn't be as noticeable out in the system because we'd be able to blend it due to the high volume of water necessary. But in the wintertime, we're down to less than three million gallons a day and to be able to produce Long Pond out there in the system, it would have a much more dramatic effect. So that's, that's where it's at at the present time.
Okay. Thank you. Any... Any other questions from the board? Any other public comment? All right. Well, we'll look forward to the, your final report, but if you can move forward to give us the design costs for, for these issues as we continue to progress forward before town meeting. Any other comments you want to make, Mr. Jack?
Just wanted to give you an idea maybe of, from a cost perspective, how that actually lays out on a couple of the options, just something to think about between now and the time the report comes out. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Looking at a worst-case scenario and presuming that it was going to be a forty million, forty-seven million dollar project, we'd be looking at probably a twenty-year bond under the state's SRF program, which is a state revolving fund under Clean Water. And they allow for twenty years at two percent is what the current rate is. So what we would have to come up with annually in order to be able to afford forty-seven million dollars over that time would be three point three million dollars per year, and that includes the principal and interest payment. So that would be a, a set principal payment or a fixed payment throughout the term and a variable or declining interest payment over the term. So basically, the three options that I see are all on the water rate, all on the tax rate, or some combination thereof. So what I'm just going to throw out here tonight is all on the water rate and/or all on the tax rate. The current fiscal year thirteen projected revenue is just over five million dollars for water revenues. That would mean we need an approximate sixty-five, sixty-five percent increase in the revenue. That's not to say the rate, but it is in the revenue if it was going to be all on the water rate. So if you doubled the minimum and had a thirty percent increase in the excess charge, that would take the minimum from ninety-eight, ninety-eight to a hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-six cents annually. So it essentially doubled. The excess rate would go from the current two dollars and eighty cents per one hundred cubic feet to three dollars and sixty-four cents per one hundred cubic feet. And from an order of magnitude and comparative purposes, currently for wastewater rates, the annual minimum is two hundred and forty-four dollars. So it's higher than what the water increase would be. And the current sewer rate is six dollars and ten cents per one hundred cubic feet. So that's almost twice what the rate would be if it was all on the water rate. Then what the town could consider is an ascending block structure. Namely, that it's punitive and intentionally punitive to begin with, but the bottom line to an ascending block, right now, we have a fixed rate, which means you pay your minimum. And for however much water you use thereafter, it's two dollars and eighty cents per one hundred cubic feet. Ascending block establishes a block structure there that says, let's say, from one hundred to five hundred cubic, a hundred cubic feet, it would be a set rate. And then the more you use, there would be another block, there would be a higher rate, and then another block beyond that that would be an even higher rate. But that is an opportunity for the town to look at that as well. On the tax rate, if a hundred percent of it were on the tax rate, the annual cost for a two-hundred thousand dollar property would be sixty-two dollars a year. On a four-hundred thousand dollar property, it would be a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, or a hundred and twenty-four dollars per year. And that would be an increase on the tax rate of thirty-one cents per thousand. Some of the issues that you'll have to consider on this, though, if it's all on the water rate, there wouldn't be a ballot question. There would be a town meeting vote for authorization, and all of it would be borne by the water system users. If it was all on the tax rate, it would be a ballot question necessary. That's either all or a portion thereof on the tax rate. And nonprofit entities would be excluded on that. So just some points to ponder in.
What do you mean by nonprofit entities?
They're, they don't pay the taxes. So if you put it on the tax rate, they don't, they don't pay a burden on the tax rate. And that would include those that have payments in lieu of taxes as well, to some degree. So they wouldn't, they wouldn't have the impact there. But those are just some things to consider. But in an order of magnitude, you know that it would double the minimum rate, and it would increase the excess rate by about thirty percent in order to fund the most expensive option, all on the water rate. So just something to think about.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a quick question? All summer long, I watched the trucks that spray trees pull up to the cranberry bogs and pump all that water. And is that allowed normally? They fill their truck up free. I watch them all the time down on Obancible Road, all summer long. And then they go spray the trees, you know, with the, and they use the water.
On a fire hydrant?
No, they pump it out of the, I watch them put the hose right in the cranberry bog.
Right. We, we have no control over that, meaning at least Public Works has no control over that. That generally falls under DNR.
Just curious, because they're getting all that free water. I'm just wondering. I mean, you see them do it all the time with the hydro seed trucks and everything, so I just, thank you very much.
I wouldn't mind having a copy that may be eventually distributed to us as we make our decision. That's very informative if you could.
Sure.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Any other comments? Thank you very much. Next up is authorize the town manager to issue a request for proposal for professional technical assistance, water quality management committee in wastewater division in the amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. Mr. Suso, do you want to make any comments, or would Mr. Batamis like to?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have some representatives here that are prepared to comment on this. The, as the board's aware, considerable, this considerable information has been provided regarding this next step on professional technical assistance, and I'll just defer to Jared Batamis to make further comments.
As you know, the CWMP and the demonstration projects, two point seven million, two point five, has caused a fair number of contracts to go out, a fair number of technical questions that the committee itself would like answered. And it quite honestly exceeds the amount of resources I can put to it and still keep track of questions like the wind turbine, compliance with the, our permit limit and things like that. So that, it was felt that the eco toilets, not the eco, this is professional technical assistance, is needed so the committee can move along fairly quickly and have some personal engineering, a personal technical. This person would be much like the existing contract, but we would go out to advertise. The person would report to me, but the person would be under the direction of the water quality management committee and myself. And we would track it. I think the, the issue we had to date, I think the committee, the chair, and myself have worked out a very amenable relationship. There are certain things that they do, and I won't say I don't care about, but I don't worry about it. There are other things I like to keep a little closer track on, and Eric and I talk, or the consultant will talk. I would think that's how we'd go forward with this next sixty thousand dollars. The committee did approve it. We're well within the two point five million dollars of available capital expenditures. And we're not even coming close to the bonding authorization that the committee has, is operating under. As you know, town meeting authorized two point seven. The board approved a one, a one million dollar bonding, and we're well below that. So the finances of it say, this is applicable. And I think the committee needs the help, and I need the help. I don't know if Virginia wants to address anything else.
Yes, Jeff?
I see a major point of the task is also to help with the application for state revolving funds.
That was in the project description. This person will help with a lot of things. That's also in the current GHD contract. One of the, this is what the committee would like this person to do. So the person will do a lot what the committee wants. But we have to balance what other contracts we have. So I think this person will definitely assist us getting through that application, but it won't be that person's sole responsibility.
No, but I was just saying, as a way of some money that can be used to leverage more money in the future.
Yes.
That reason making it an excellent expense.
I'm of approval.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Eyes have it. Okay. Next up is approve minutes of a meeting of December the third.
There's a note that those should be the minutes of the tenth. Does it say the tenth?
There, there was no note, but you're correct, that they are the minutes.
Getting a verbal note.
Okay.
Can we do that, seeing as it's not?
I don't know. Maybe we'll need to just hold these over until.
You can hold them and post them next week.
Yes, that's correct. Okay. Okay, we'll move to the summary of actions. Proclamation, the Eagle Scout will hold, annual licenses will hold, approve grant a license to maintain a fence, Vernon Avenue, Falmouth. Approve program documents for the Eco Toilet Incentive Program.
Hold please.
Demonstration, hold that one. Approve request for special event, Run For Your Life Fundraising Road Race, North Falmouth, five, four, thirteen, to hold that. And authorize filing of fire department grant applications, ten thousand dollars and fifteen hundred dollars. So we're looking to approve number three and number six at this time.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The eyes have it. Proclamation, Eagle Scout. I'm going to have Mr. Vice Chairman Putnam read that, having been an Eagle Scout himself, read that into the record.
Not Ben, am.
Am, I'm sorry. What'd you, are you?
You never stop being an Eagle Scout.
Does the uniform still fit?
No. Whereas Daniel Carr Howland of Boy Scout Troop Forty-Two has successfully completed qualifications for the rank of Eagle Scout, a rigorous and demanding process that teaches patience, perseverance, and teamwork, and requires strong goal-setting. And whereas Daniel Carr Howland met these challenges with aplomb and shall be recognized as an outstanding representative of his family, his troop, and his community. And whereas the Boy Scouts of America, long acknowledged for building fine citizens, calls for Special Court of Honor to award its highest symbol of achievement to those who complete this rank. And whereas Daniel Carr Howland is now an Eagle Scout with all its rank and privilege, now therefore we, Kevin Murphy, Brent Putnam, Mary Pat Flynn, David Braga, and Doug Jones, a selectman of the Town of Falmouth, do hereby declare and proclaim, Sunday, January sixth, twenty thirteen, is Daniel Carr Howland Day.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The eyes have it. Great. Anyone be able to make that event specifically in January?
I'll have to check, make that one.
Okay. We kind of lost the last one in some form or fashion, so it'd be great if we could have someone actually there. Next up is approve two thousand and three annual license renewals. Just for disclosure purposes, I'm behold of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. We have all-alcoholic club licenses. Do I have a motion for those?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The eyes have it. All-alcoholic restaurant licenses. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The eyes have it. All-alcoholic in holders license.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The eyes have it. Club and virtual licenses.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The eyes have it.
We have to vote Starbucks.
One, two, three here, the disclosures. Entertainment licenses.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The eyes have it. Sunday entertainment license.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The eyes have it. Automatic amusement devices.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The eyes have it. Class one, secondhand dealers license.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The eyes have it. Class two, secondhand dealers license.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The eyes have it. Next up is approve program documents for the Eco Toilet Incentive Program. Do I have someone who wants to represent the Eco Toilets this evening?
May I set it up and then make, make, if you need for additional? There is quite a bit of material here, but I wanted to make sure the board was familiar with the documents that will, are proposed to be used to support the Eco Toilet Demonstration Project. They were drafted in collaboration with the Eco Toilet Subcommittee, prepared by the staff and consultant, and reviewed by me and town council. What you have is the, are four different documents. There's a contract for the incentive, which is actually the application. It's quite lengthy, and it also includes the terms of the interest-free one hundred percent forgiveness loan. The second document is a standard installation contract, which is a contract between the owner and the installer, and ensures the project costs, the proper materials installation, and the licensing. The third is a promissory note between the owner and the town, which outlines the terms of granting of the funds and the forgiveness process. And the fourth is the cancellation, which would be a process by this board to basically affirm that the participant has met all the program requirements and that the promissory note may be forgiven. It's, it is a lot of material. Sia and Jerry are here, can answer questions or give you any more detail that you wish about these. It is a significant amount of investment in private property. I'm confident that the security, appropriate level of security of those funds have now been placed on those documents. But it is quite a lengthy process. They've got, I understand, up to fifteen community residents that are eager to participate, which is wonderful. I don't want to take too much more away from Sia and Jerry, have done a great job. There's a lot of material, I understand that.
Well, I get, I had asked to hold this because I guess one of the, the biggest question that jumps out at me, and a lot of the other questions are, I guess, minor in nature and not necessarily a showstopper, but I guess my biggest concern is the last bullet on the first page. Actually, it says page two of four at the bottom. Property owner acknowledges that the installation of the Eco Toilet may not exempt them from future betterment assessment related to a public sewer system. Now, I understand that it says "may not," but of course, town meeting basically voted to say, look, we want to explore the idea of exempting these participants from a betterment, from any additional costs if a sewer system is built, so as to encourage people to do this. I guess my biggest concern is that this line, even though it says "may not," it doesn't say "will not," it doesn't say "it won't exempt them" or any other such thing, but I'm concerned that it might deter people, that they'll look at this and say, well, why do I want to go through with it if I might not be exempt from being, from having to buy into a sewer system in the future? Thoughts? Questions?
Maybe, do we have people that are waiting, willing to sign this type of agreement?
We do.
Okay. Even with this clause in there?
They will.
And is it, is it enough people to actually have a sufficient sample size to, to actually get some worthwhile results from a study? Or is it just, are, do we talk about enthusiastic people who might do it anyway, no matter what this document says, but it's still not going to be enough to give us the appropriate sample size?
That's a great question. We have received over a hundred and forty interested people in the program. I've talked to every single one of them, and have gone on over forty site visits. And over forty people have received actual quotes for materials. So those, those quotes don't include labor, but just what the actual equipment would be that would be installed in the home. From that, we have gotten over twenty people who have said yes to installing one of two configurations of technology. They've, they've seen these documents. There has been, I, I can't say that nobody has looked at that and said, what does that mean? And my explanation has been, while town meeting has endorsed the exploration of the exemption from betterment, there's a lot that goes into being able to say yes from a, from a policy and a legal, and there are a number of parameters. So I don't think we're in a position to tell people they could be exempt legally. That's my understanding. And, and people, when they understand that, that it's being looked at, it's being explored, but there, there can't be any promises made because it's an issue. And Heather probably can add more to that.
No, I, I don't want to add any more to that, but I think I want to follow up on No, I don't want to add any more to that, but I think I want to follow up on the full answer to Brent Selectman Putnam's question. And that is, does it provide a sufficient sample size? And just talk about demonstration project group one, that you will max out group one.
Fully, fully participate, fully, yes.
I just don't want to scare people off, you know, because that was one of the issues that was raised during town meeting was that if we don't provide some sort of an exemption, that we may get stuck or we may have a concern about not getting enough participants. And so I guess I'm satisfied now, so.
Okay. I think it leaves the options open. It could be down the road, it could be a negotiated percentage or something of that nature. No one knows. Okay. So do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close the eyes, have it. Next up, approved request for a special event, run for your life fundraiser road race, North Falmouth on 54, 2013. I only had a couple of comments. One was that we require part of the, as part of the permit, that again, this is similar to the route over in North Falmouth that the Zuma Road Race took, but there was a road closure in that race. I just wanted to make sure there are no road closures for this race, so if we can make that part of the motion, so we make.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. Motion, any discussion? All those in favor?
We need a second.
Oh, just a second, I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Second it? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close the eyes, have it. Okay. Next up is, that concludes our business. With next issue would be the town manager's report and then we'll go to Selectmen's reports after that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple items, earlier I had reported to the board that I was working with Personnel Director Denise Coleman on a draft employee code of conduct and I have now completed the, that draft document with the helpful review and input of a number of department heads. Subject to a final legal review, I do anticipate implementing this within the coming month and we'll keep the board apprised of that. Also, I and Jennifer Petit joined the Selectmen's Capital Advisory Committee this past Thursday for their third regular meeting. We were all, of course, saddened by the unexpected and untimely passing of committee member Zeb Rich. Progress did continue on a discussion from the standpoint of potential revenue enhancement as well as cost controls based upon suggestions from committee members. Ray Jack and Don Hoffer were in attendance at the request of the committee. Just lost my voice here. Pardon me, Mr. Chairman, I'm making the comeback now.
All right, all right.
Ray Jack and Don Hoffer were in attendance at the request of the committee to engage in this discussion from the standpoint of their departments. We are again scheduled to meet this Thursday, December 20th, and will be talking with two other department heads as well. FY14 budget meetings with town departments were completed this past week. Finance Director Jennifer Petit was able to participate actively in these meetings. The discussion and review was excellent. Work continues diligently in preparation for the proposed FY14 budget due to the board no later than January 1. Continuing to my report, I attached a memorandum for the board, which I requested from DPW Director Ray Jack, which provides an update on the continuing challenge regarding water discoloration. As the board's aware, this has periodically affected different neighborhoods in the town and of course, that water color issue was commented upon to some significant extent this evening with our water filtration preliminary status report earlier. And Mr. Chairman, the report is attached, I can go through it in summary form, but if the board is agreeable, I'll let it stand as transmitted to the board in the interest of time, unless you would prefer otherwise.
I'm fine, the board, any other questions?
Okay. Continuing, this past Tuesday evening, I attended the scheduled meeting of the finance committee. I was also joined by Finance Director Jennifer Petit and Fire Chief Mark Sullivan. I reported on the results of that to the board as well. Also, as Selectmen Chairman Kevin Murphy had mentioned to the board at your meeting this past week, I transmitted for your general review, a proposed draft town manager evaluation instrument. It is, of course, not uncommon for municipalities to find it challenging to arrive at an appropriate evaluation document. Please note that this is a hybrid document based upon an evaluation process originally designed for the ICMA Executive Director, which I believe has some advantages for our process, subject to the Selectmen's comfort with this instrument, of course. Please know that in advance, in a few places, the term Executive Director still appears. The intent, of course, is that we understand this is a reference, in this case, to the town manager in our circumstance, if the board would be so comfortable. Some additional changes and adaptations can certainly be made if that would be the desire of the board. It, of course, focuses upon your strategic plan adopted this past summer as well as the goals which the board set for me earlier this calendar year. And thank you for considering this draft instrument going forward, members of the board. Finally, I want to extend best wishes to all for a warm and healthy holiday season filled with friends and family. And that concludes my report. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, I'm going to open it up to individual Selectmen reports. Before we did so, I just wanted to make sure that the board realized about that untimely death of Mr. Rich. And I know Mr. Hoffer attended his funeral up in Norton where he was originally from and served as a Selectman there. We will advertise for the position, so if the board has any candidates that you may suggest, we'd be happy to have them come forward. Again, the board is not scheduled to meet again until January the 7th, but I will schedule a meeting sometime first week of January to go through the budget as required by statute for ourselves. And hopefully, we can move forward with that. I just wanted to check with the board to make sure that I haven't heard any feedback about the evaluation form. And if the form is all right with the board, I'd like to move forward with it. You folks can fill it out, get it back to me and I'll disseminate, well, put together all the information and then we can move forward individually to discuss the evaluation with the town manager. Does that sound?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything else? I'm going to move it to individual reports.
I just have one tomorrow. I think we all received an email from Rich Sherman that Marine Sergeant Brian Nelson is going to be receiving a Purple Heart at the high school tomorrow afternoon at 1:30. And...
I believe it's Wednesday.
I meant Wednesday, not tomorrow. I keep thinking tomorrow's Wednesday. No, it's Wednesday at 1:30. And he, and I've already responded that I would attend, but he really would like to know who's going to attend from everybody at this table because he wants to acknowledge people who are there and maybe have some certain seating. So if you get back to him, he'd appreciate that. And the only other thing I wanted to mention was I thought it might be appropriate, Mr. Chairman, if we do take a moment, a moment of silence to remember those children who were murdered in Connecticut. And I have, I had a call from, or an email from an individual who asked if I thought this Selectmen might be supportive to some, to some members of the community holding a vigil sometime, maybe later this week in their memory. And I said, as far as I was concerned, I thought it was a very loving and caring thing to do and if people wanted to come together to do that, I would certainly help support it in some way. I don't, I know we're not going to meet again in terms of where they may gather, but perhaps if we agreed that wherever it might be on any public property, that we might support it, just thought.
I, I would think that there would not need a permit for something like that, spontaneous gathering in some form or fashion, especially to remember souls like that. But if you'd like, we'd take that moment of silence at this time. Thank you very much. And I do know that I received some emails from folks that were quite concerned about the safety in our schools. And I'm sure that the superintendent's office and the school committee are quite concerned about that as well as we move forward. And we'll address to the best of their ability that safety of our children in this community.
Mr. Chairman, I can tell you that being part of one of the school safety teams in the past, that was actually then Captain Dunn, who was actually architect of what we have in place. And I know there's been other communities that's actually contacted him for assistance. And I can assure the public that the public safety in this town relative to school safety is top priority. We have a very good program in place. And I just thought, since you brought it up, I would mention that, that, and I've seen the emails too, and people calling, they're very concerned, as they should be. But I can assure them that Falmouth Police is, and the fire, especially the police with the security of the school, it's something that's in place. And, because I was part of setting it up, and it's very detailed, but it's very, I don't know how to word it, but it's to tell the parents they can be very confident that we have something in place.
Mr. Chairman, can I just interject on that with Selectman Bragg, if I may? Just a reminder that with the concurrence of this board, of course, in the FY13 budget and with the approval of town meeting, the two school resource officer positions were reestablished in Lawrence School and at the high school. So this board took a lead in affirming that those positions be included on a full-time basis at those two schools. So as Selectman Bragg has mentioned, the template was put in place and those officers have been serving in that capacity in those schools for a number of months as pursuant to the budget and in reassurance. Beyond that, there is a very significant template and a framework for school safety, which as Selectman Bragg had noted, based on his own personal experience as well as that of our acting chief Dunn and all our officers, it is a very significant process and framework. And we continue to monitor that and upgrade it as needed to ensure safety. Not every eventuality can be guaranteed, we know that in life, but I think that we should take great consolation that this board and the town has been proactive in establishing a significant safety presence in our schools and in their environment. And that's, remains a high priority.
And the last thing I'd like to do is to the board and to everybody out there is to wish them a happy and healthy and safe and peaceful holiday season. And I hope you're all able to enjoy the beauty of this community and friends and loved ones during this period of time.
I just would appreciate some advice from the board. I know that the school committee is having a search committee for a new superintendent and they were not asking for a member of the board of Selectmen to be on that. I'm interested in applying as a community at large member. I was on that board search committee 35 years ago. In some ways, feel it as a, coming back to it again, but want to figure out from this board whether you thought that was appropriate for me to put my name in as a community at large member or whether you felt that there was, as a Selectman, should stay out of it.
Well, I could tell you that I served in that capacity when the committee chose Superintendent Richards, the last search and then before, subsequent to that search, they hired Mr. Dupuy and didn't go outside. I think it's a very useful and valuable tool, especially the board to be represented. I'm kind of shocked that they didn't ask a member of the board, but I would be happy to. I think it's appropriate that someone from the board try to gain access to that committee and be able to give a little insight moving forward. Specifically, you as an educator, you have some knowledge of that, what we're looking for and the evolution of what the superintendents currently are.
And thank you.
Okay. Anything else from the board? I looked for a motion to adjourn and possibly have a little holiday cheer. I know it's way past David's.
Still open.
I had already preped this and called them, let them know. They were even going to keep the kitchen there available.
So moved.
Okay. Motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close the eyes, have it.
Merry Christmas.
Thought you might want that.
Hi, I'm Margaret Gifford.
And I'm Pat Thatcher. We're members of the team at Sotheby's International Realty in Falmouth. And Falmouth has been so busy with real estate.
Yes, it has. I've been so busy, I haven't had time to color my hair.
Margaret, that's way too busy.
I know.
Still, it's a great time for buyers because interest rates remain at historic lows.
And it's a great time for sellers because the inventory is so low.
Hmm, so that's increasing demand.
Yes, it is.
Don't you love Falmouth?
Remember, WC Communications is your printing team. We are calm and cool under pressure. You can call us at 508-563-7366 or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303.